Good evening. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, April 14th. I'm Steve Robinson and all of you here tonight. We'll begin by reading our land acknowledgement. On April 14th, 2025, we acknowledge that this sacred land on which Smith Falls is now located has been the site of human activity for over 10,000 years in its rich and indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and inherited territory of the Algonquin Anishinaabe Nation. We are grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We are also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in the making of the Rideau Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all of our relations. Together, may we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship, being mindful of generations to come. So I will call the meeting to order at 5:01 PM. And I need a recommended motion for the approval of the amended agenda. Moved by Counselor McGuire.
There's, I'm sorry, I have another amendment to propose. I would ask if we could defer item... 10.2. 5, yeah. Just under 10.10, there will be those reports if possible.
Everybody in favor?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So we'll defer 10.5 and we'll defer 10.10 as well. Yes. So, move this one.
Sure.
Okay. Moved by Counselor McGuire, seconded by Counselor Miller, that the April 14th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting intended to be approved as amended. All favor?
Carry.
Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest and/or conflict of interest we generally can bear up? No. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. Would like to move the approval of minutes. Moved by Counselor McCann, seconded by Counselor Brennan, that the minutes of the March 17th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting be approved. All favor? Carry. We have no delegations. CNN Morris, do we have any reports?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not have any verbal reports. We felt we had enough written ones, so we'll bypass the verbal ones for tonight.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any Committee of the Whole consent reports. So we do have an in-camera session about personal matters about an identifiable individual. Look, I have a recommended motion that we moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Quinn, that the Council of Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls adds, provided in section 239.2B of the municipal act 2001, as amended, moved into a closed meeting at 5:04 PM to discuss personal matters about identifiable individuals. All favor? Carry. We shouldn't be too long.
So moving on, we're going to go into our priority issues, and we're going to begin with item 10.1, lower-reach park redesign report with Director Clark.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm standing here tonight bringing forward our much anticipated lower-reach revisioning report. Very quickly, I'd like to say thank you to Tana Torch, who is the principal person shepherding this from our department. She did a heck of a lot of work, so thanks, Tana. She loves it when I call her out like this, so everybody look at her now. And also, just to everyone who took time from the community, we had a lot of resident interaction and feedback, and so this is really a reflection of their ideas, and so we're really excited to bring this forward. This evening, I am seeking three key things from you. The first is that council receive the report on the lower-reach park redesign as presented. The second is that council approve the placement of the primary parking lot. That key word is "primary." There are a couple of different ones. We'll outline the primary parking lot so that we can get through that that's already in the capital budget for this year, so we'd like to move forward as quickly as we can with that. And three, that council adopt the lower-reach park redesign in principle, recognizing that future phases will be subject to budget deliberation and future council approval. Knowing that this is a fairly long runway, this will not all happen tomorrow unless someone's rich uncle wants to give us a bunch of money that we are not aware of, but we will have some conversation about that. So I'm pleased to be joined by Doug Fountain from FOTEN Design, if you want to come on up. He and his coworker Sydney Truesdale did a heck of a lot of work as well on this, and we're the lead consultants with us. So I'm going to turn it over to Doug, and he's going to walk us through his presentation. Unless you need me to do one more?
That's great.
Okay, it's all you, Doug.
Thank you, Stephanie. Mr. Chair, to council, thank you for inviting us to share the results of the work that we did with your community. Yes, regrettably, Sydney Truesdale is unable to be here tonight, but she did do the lion's share of the work on this project, so I want that to be publicly acknowledged. I also want to thank Tana Torch and Director Clark for all their help and assistance during this process. It was very helpful. Most importantly, the community that came out gave their time to speak with us, take our phone calls, participate in the public workshop sessions that we did, fill out the two public surveys that were posted. That input and feedback was very much appreciated, and it helped to inform what we're presenting to you tonight. So our firm has worked on hundreds of park open space and trail projects over the years, and we've seen a lot of parks similar to lower-reach that have sort of developed over the years. This is a big park. Sometimes these projects sort of lose their rudder as councils change, and there's a response to funding opportunities of the day that arise. So we get what we see as kind of an inefficient use of the park space. So it's kind of, we call it plop design. So we've got some funding for this amenity. Let's plop it here. It's not interfering with anything else, but what you end up with is a park that's kind of disjointed and disconnected from everything that's within it. So lower-reach, I have a personal connection to lower-reach, as do two other members on our project team. We grew up in Smith Falls, so we've all got fond memories of the park as teenagers and kids. And lower-reach has really kind of, it's aged similarly to myself. It's got some normal wear and tear, but it's also got some parts that probably could stand to be replaced. So I'll just, if you could go to the next slide, please.
You're not implying that you're not a garbage dump also, are you?
No, well, maybe. Sometimes it feels like that. So our study area includes what you would know as the, what we've referred to as the core area of lower-reach park, so centered around the Kinsman Pavilion. We've also considered the Civitan Ball Diamonds and Gleason Park to the east. And then there's a long stretch that extends to the west, a long, thin, narrow stretch that you won't necessarily see reflected in a lot of the illustrations in the design brief that's been passed to you or the master plan, but I want you all to appreciate that we did recognize it. It's a very important connection from lower-reach to downtown and Victoria Park further west. So we do value that parcel of land as part of lower-reach, but it's very narrow dimensionally, so it's kind of restricted in terms of what we can do programmatically in that space. Next slide, please, Carrie. So why is it important to redo a master plan? So some of you may not know, but there was a master plan that was commissioned by the Town of Smith Falls in the 70s. It was shortly after the Squash and Curling Club opened in 76. There was a firm called Sesqueg that was hired to do a master plan. They consulted with the community, and this is an image of it here that you see on this plan. And it's kind of, it's an interesting document to look at because we can compare what's there now with what was proposed, and you can see that there's not a whole lot that is, that was actually implemented. I think the tennis courts were probably the first things that were installed in the park, and they remain where they are today. It's a perfectly logical place to put them. It's a great orientation. We wouldn't propose to move those. But the problem was that this was a former landfill site, and again, as the park evolved and developed and council of the day responded to the changing recreational needs, we ended up with something that is kind of disjointed. So we realize that councils do what they can with the resources they have of the day, but sometimes these things need to be refreshed, and we think it's time for a new roadmap for lower-reach. It's going to inform a lot of decisions about, you know, everything from minor improvements, managing special events in the park, and then those big capital improvements that you may seek to do over the years. So what we wanted to do was, it's on this slide actually, understand and better serve the current and emerging recreational needs of the community, and then prioritize those needs to ensure a fiscally prudent phased approach for small improvements and major renovations. So next slide. So this may be a refresher for some of you that came out to the public engagement session we had in February, but I want to just run you through how we got to this plan. I want you to appreciate that there is a fair bit of study involved. So before we put pen to paper, we looked at the past plans, we looked at the site and really tried to explore some of the limitations and some of the opportunities that lower-reach park presents as it sits now. So we document, when we do this site analysis, we document things like the natural features, the topography, drainage, visitor use and traffic patterns. We list the current amenities and facilities. We looked at a high level at the infrastructure that the park has, and then, of course, the underlying soil conditions and the general state of maintenance and service level that the park has. Next slide, please. So the third step in this process, and again, many of you participated in some of these sessions, we see this as probably the most important aspect of any project like this. So engaging with the community, we reached out to members of the community, we worked with staff to identify some targeted stakeholders, some of those special interest groups that have a connection to the park, mostly sport and rec leagues, the Kinsman Club. And we tried to get an understanding and appreciation of what they value most in lower-reach park, what's important to them, what do they hate about the park, what do they love about the park, how they engage with the park. So in addition to that, we had two public open houses and two public surveys, and we did our level best with the help from Stephanie's group to reach out to the public and really try and get a good response. And I, we did, I think we had over 300 responses to the surveys and a lot of people attending the events, so. In the back of the design brief that was given to you today, there's an appendix that has an outline of all the different activities that we did to engage with the public. So it's a, it's a big read, but I encourage you to look at that because we really tried to use that as the basis for what we were going to propose. So next slide. You can probably flip through these pretty quickly. So from there, we were armed with all the information that we felt we needed to start to put pen to paper. We thought about big ideas, small changes and improvements that could be made, and we worked with town staff to sort of synthesize all those thoughts and findings into three plans. And from there, we sort of troubleshoot some of the benefits of each and synthesize that again into a draft master plan that we brought to the community in February and sought input on. So there was a survey that accompanied the release of this document and as well the public session. So we now arrive to, probably flip ahead to Carrie if you don't mind. So this is a plan that Director Clark is asking for your endorsement today in principle, and I suppose I could pause for questions now before we get it, coming up on the meat of the, of the information here. So if you had any questions about process, maybe now I could...
Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, thank you. And you're younger than me because I remember when the dump was there. Yeah, that's great, and I'm glad to hear there's a great comeback from public. Is there any chance that we could actually see the actual comments that you've got?
Absolutely. We have documentation. We, for confidentiality, we didn't include it in the report.
Redacted names.
We can redact personal information from that.
Okay, that would be good to see. Thank you.
Counselor Nolan?
Thank you. I wonder, so there'll be lots of questions here tonight, and that's great, but I wonder if we could also buy some time. We just got that report today. I'd like a chance to read it and to hear feedback from the community as well. So this is not really a question for you, it's more for my colleagues, that we consider the report and the recommendations maybe next week and just take this time to speak to the consultants tonight.
Is it fine? Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor McCann?
Well, as long as we have a robust discussion tonight. Yeah, because I'm ready on the principle. Like, I like the plan. On the feedback, I think, like Counsel Brennan, terrific. I think the process was sound. I think we ended up with a really robust community engagement, which I'm thrilled with. And so I'm happy with the overall in principle, so I just...
Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, I get, I get what you're saying, Counselor Miller, and, but we have this guy in front of us right now, so I'd like, we could hear him out, and then by all means, you may have to come back after we digest things, and that's a fair comment that this is big with numbers and everything, but you've made the effort to be here, so I'm more than willing to hear you out and then, then pull you back in.
I'll just, I'll just interject. I think that's actually what Counselor Miller was getting at.
Was it?
She wanted to have a discussion tonight, but she wanted to defer making a decision until after...
Okay. By all means.
After digesting the information.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions right now? Go ahead.
Great, okay. Thank you. So I am going to focus sort of high level. Once you have time to properly digest the rest of the report, you're going to find a lot of smaller improvements are suggested within it. And again, as Director Clark noted, this is a decades-long plan to implement. So the major or sort of big moves that I'll speak about tonight, I think there is seven or eight of them. I'll try and go through them very quickly, and feel free to...
It's going to inform a lot of decisions about, you know, everything from minor improvements, managing special events in the park and then those big capital improvements that you, they seek to do over the years. So what we wanted to do was, it's, it's on this slide actually, understand and better serve the current and emerging, emerging recreational needs of the community and then prioritize those needs to ensure a fiscally prudent phased approach for small improvements and major renovations. So next slide. So this may be a refresher for some of you that came out to the public engagement session we had in February. But I want to just run you through how we got to this plan. I want you to appreciate that there is a fair bit of study involved. So before we put pen to paper, we looked at the past plans. We looked at the site and really tried to explore some of the limitations and some of the opportunities that Lower Reach Park presents as it sits now. So we document, when we do this site analysis, we document things like the natural features, the topography, drainage, visitor use and traffic patterns. We list the current amenities and facilities. We looked at a high level at the infrastructure that the park has and then of course, the underlying soil conditions and the general state of maintenance and the service level that the park has. Next slide, please. So the third step in this process, and again, many of you participated in some of these sessions. We see this as probably the most important aspect of any, any project like this. So engaging with the community, we reached out to members of the community. We worked with staff to identify some targeted stakeholders, some of those special interest groups that have a connection to the park, mostly sport and rec leagues, the Kinsman Club. And we tried to get an understanding and appreciation of what they value most in Lower Reach Park. What's important to them, what do they hate about the park, what do they love about the park, how they engage with the park. So in addition to that, we had two public open houses and two public surveys. And we did our level best with the help from Stephanie's group to reach out to the public and really try and get a good response. And I, we did, I think we had over three hundred responses to the surveys and a lot of people attending the events, so. In the back of the design brief that was given to you today, there's an appendix that has an outline of all the different activities that we did to engage with the public. So it's a, it's a big read, but I encourage you to, to look at that because we really tried to use that as the basis for what we were going to propose. So next slide. You can probably flip through these pretty quickly. So from there, we, we were armed with all the information that we felt we needed to start to put pen to paper. We thought about big ideas, small changes and improvements that could be made. And we worked with town staff to sort of synthesize all those thoughts and findings into three plans. And from there, we sort of troubleshoot some of the benefits of, of each and synthesize that again into a draft master plan that we brought to the community in February and sought input on. So there was a survey that accompanied the release of this document and as well, the, the public session. So we now arrive to, probably flip ahead to Carrie if you don't mind. So this is a plan that we're, Director Clark is asking for your endorsement today in principle. And I, I suppose I could pause for questions now before we get it. It's coming up on the meat of the, of the information here. So if you had any questions about process, maybe now I could.
Councilor Brennan?
Yeah, thank you. And you're younger than me because I remember when the dump was there. Yeah, that's great. And I, I'm glad to hear there's a great comeback from public. Is there any chance that we could actually see the actual comments that you've got?
Absolutely. We have documentation. We, for confidentiality, we didn't include it in the report.
Redacted names.
We can redact personal information from that.
Okay, that would be good to see. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I, I wonder, so there'll be lots of questions here tonight and that's great, but I wonder if we could also buy some time. We just got that report today. I'd like a chance to read it and to hear feedback from the community as well. So this is not really a question for you. It's more for my colleagues that we consider the report and the recommendations maybe next week and just take this time to speak to the consultants tonight.
Is it fine? Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor McCaffrey?
Well, as long as we have a robust discussion tonight. Yeah, because I'm, I'm ready on the principle. I can prove it. Like I like the plan. On the feedback, I think, like Counselor Brennan, terrific. I think the process was sound. I think we ended up with a really robust community engagement, which I'm thrilled with. And so I'm, I'm happy with the overall in principle. So I just.
Counselor Brennan? Yeah, I get, I get what you're saying, Counselor Miller. And, but we have this guy in front of us right now. So I'd like, we could hear him out and then by all means, you may have to come back after we digest things. And that's a fair comment that this is big with numbers and everything, but you've made the effort to be here. So I'm more than willing to hear you out and then, then pull you back in.
I'll just, I'll just interject. I think that's actually what Counselor Miller was getting at.
Was it?
She wanted to have a discussion tonight, but she wanted to defer making a decision until after.
Okay, by all means.
After digesting the information. Anybody else got any questions right now? Go ahead.
Great, okay. Thank you. So I am going to focus sort of high level. Once you have time to properly digest the rest of the report, you're going to find a lot of smaller improvements are suggested within it. And again, as Director Clark noted, this is a decades-long plan to implement. So the, the major or sort of big moves that I'll, I'll speak about tonight, I think there is seven or eight of them. I'll try and go through them very quickly and feel free to pepper me with questions. I can maybe take a pause at the end of each one and continue on it if, if that makes sense. So we had a electrical and lighting consultant on our team who took a high-level investigation of the state of the electrical infrastructure in the park because we know there's going to be a fair electrical load requirement or demand with the programming that you have, sports field lighting and improved pathway and hopefully access road and parking lot lighting. So the, the general results are that a lot of the infrastructure is, is really deteriorated beyond a usable life. And it's actually in some areas, the kiosks, the distribution kiosks in the park are in a dangerous condition and, and should be replaced. New lighting for all those new features, obviously, I think this is not an added cost, but consider LED lights more energy efficient. Follow Illuminating Engineering Society recommendations for light levels and distribution. These are all things that you would probably consider anyway. So there's the electrical infrastructure. Probably one of the, the, the big problems with the functionality of the park right now, and this was brought up in the RFP that we responded to last summer, the access and the parking. So right now, there are currently zero accessible parking stalls in Lower Reach. Using AODA Design of Public Spaces standards as a guideline, you have zero accessible parking stalls in Lower Reach. People find parking where they can. It's often on the grass, does a lot of damage to the soft scape, which the town then incurs operational costs. People tend to want to park under the trees, damaging critical root zones of those trees. So we want to provide safe and accessible parking for visitors. And we started to look at the peak demand. So there's not a whole lot of hard data or science on planning for parking in a big regional serving park like Lower Reach. We look at the number of users in any particular sport, the age groups, the turnover that would be happening between an early game and a later game with older kids, all the spectators that are likely to come, potentially two caregivers arriving to the park, coming separately hustling to get there for a five-thirty game sort of thing, grandparents coming. It totals, in the new plan, the requirement count tallies up to about seven-hundred-and-seventy-five parking stalls. So right now, informally, you only have two-hundred-and-forty. Now, we don't want to advise you to pave most of your park. That's not practical. We don't want big seas of asphalt sitting empty most of the time. So we came up with a strategy that responds to where the new facilities and relocated facilities are proposed to be relocated or rebuilt. So the, what we're calling again, the, the core area, we would have a new driveway entrance come in off of Old Sly's, more or less where the current main vehicular access is. If you recall, there's an information kiosk. You come in at sort of a, an angle going to the northwest. We would tee that up properly. We had a traffic consultant on our team as well that gave us some high-level advice as to where that new intersection could be formalized and best located. We looked, we did look at different options. We had it on the bend at one point in a previous concept. But we felt that just for functionality, cost, this was probably the best location. So that would bring you to a new central parking lot located sort of near the hub of, of activity that you see there now, close to the Kinsman Community Pavilion, the playgrounds, splash pads. Those are your, your primary draw. And it would also allow vehicles to, to come in and get to a point where they're close to the soccer pitches. And oftentimes, we see families that have kids in different age groups. So there might be, you know, an eight-year-old playing in the league, but the four-year-old hasn't joined yet. So they can still be in close proximity to the playground and splash pad and still feel, the parents still feel a level of safety and comfort. And it's, it's just tight-knit. It's within viewshed. So that, that parking lot could accommodate about a hundred-and-twenty cars in total. There's a new west lot proposed just off of, maybe try and, if you look over here on this plan. It doesn't show up on that screen. So this lot right here, we were proposing to relocate the bocce courts, add pickleball courts in that location. And that would be a parking lot that would exceed the, the basic minimum requirement for number of barrier-free stalls. So in that lot, you could get twenty-five to thirty, thirty-five vehicles. A new east lot would be located in the Civitan portion of the Civitan Ball Diamond portion of the park. So on the opposite side of Old Sly's. So we were proposing to put two parking cells in there. One would have about twenty cars dedicated to the dog park users. And I'll get into the relocation of the dog park in a minute. And then that would be maintained year-round. The balance of those parking stalls could be dedicated to the softball diamonds. And I'll get into the relocation of those as well, or the expansion of those. So the, we did, in the previous concept, we had proposed the existing sort of gravel triangle that is mostly on Parks Canada land up here to the north. We did have that proposed to return to green space, but some of the clubs felt that they wanted, there would be benefit to hanging on to that as an overflow parking. There's a lot of regulatory conditions that we would need to go through with Parks Canada to return that to a turf grass condition. But in the interim, it's probably best left, but not winter maintained because I realize that's kind of where the town incurs a lot of operational expense trying to keep that thing pothole-free. All the parking lots, sorry, two, two more pieces of the parking strategy. So all the streets that surround, all the local roads that surround Lower Reach could accommodate approximately ninety parallel parked vehicles on the northern side only. So I think people still use those areas, but they don't par, parallel park. They just come in and park on the grass off of the road. So we would propose that as the deep infrastructure in those streets come up for renewal, that maybe when the skin is put back on the road, you consider adding a barrier curb with a sidewalk on it to sort of control traffic. In the interim, you could look to do more signage to keep people off the grass, keep it safe and maybe more enforcement about parking in, inside the park. During special events, we felt, as it was in the past, the basketball courts, which we're proposing to expand, there's space to expand and it seems are very popular, highly used. I drove by tonight on my way in and it's full of kids and we want to accommodate more of that. However, in a special event, you could include some signage that suggests the basketball courts are going to be closed. You can have a staff person there with barricades to allow for some additional vehicles to park. So that in total adds up to your four-hundred-and-forty-five plus or minus parking stalls, which we feel is a reasonable balance between paving everything and keeping it safe and accessible. Even the core area parking lot does not need to be the size that it does year-round. I think if it were to be built, more or less as we've shown here, not the entire thing would need to be winter maintained. So you could explore the balance, you know, with winter events that do happen and leave some of it unplowed over the winter. I'll pause for questions about parking.
Counselor Miller?
Thank you. Thank you for this. I'm trying to get my head, it's been a long time since my daughter played soccer. So I'm trying to just get my head around the new parking lot, which is number twenty-one. Does that replace what is an existing soccer field now or?
The core parking lot?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, part of it. So that, there is the small T-ball diamond that's there and I'll talk about that as well. And part of that field would need to be relocated.
Just if, if I can do a follow-up, just I'm thinking ahead. If we're starting with the new parking lot, do we displace a season's worth of soccer players? And maybe that's a Stephanie question, but.
Yeah.
So the T-ball field itself, in terms of baseball, we don't actually have any bookings. So as, I think it is used on occasion, but we've got no data to, to support that. So we wouldn't have a major loss there. And I think we were planning on shifting the soccer field, correct?
There needs to be a contingency plan for those sports that are displaced every year. So, you know, part of the recommendations and Director Clark is committed to it is just maintain that ongoing dialogue every year with the sports clubs, checking in for plans for that season, maybe finding alternate locations. But it does, you're going to lose at least one season. Two is probably more realistic because you need to re-establish any seeded areas, right? So it, that, that takes a while for, for things to germinate and really establish to a point where it can handle the abuse of soccer players.
Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, and that's a good point, Counselor Miller. And I think that, that little T-ball field, I, I don't think it's formally used. It's probably more informally used and it's not, not to say anything bad, but it's not really maintained anyway. So for intensive purposes. And the main soccer field doesn't look like it's going to be affected at all. So my question would be, was when I, when you were talking about the parking and you mentioned we have informally four-hundred, did you say?
Two-hundred and forty.
Two-hundred and forty.
Informal, inaccessible.
Yeah. So does that include the berm? Because the berm, as you know, that corner that goes around is where people park, where they park to play ball. And, and so I don't know how many cars go there, but I've seen it every week. And then of course, when the fireworks are on, it's exceptionally used. So but, so yeah, that's my question is with the berm, does that include that informal number? Does that include what's used at the berm?
No. So it includes what's on the local streets now, if they were to be parallel parking. It includes the space that is out in front of the docks, between the docks and the Kinsman Pavilion and those stacked spaces that are all along that entry drive. And it include, includes that triangular parcel that exists now that we're, that's mostly on Parks Canada property. But we didn't include a count of anything that's on turf grass because, you know, there's a lot of bollards that have sort of fallen down over the years and people make their way onto the grass and it, it does the damage to the turf and the trees. Plus it creates unsafe conditions, especially when people are trying to back out onto Old Sly's and Jasper Avenue.
And then they're crossing over to the ball field when there's a tournament, right?
Yeah.
So I would, I would, I couldn't hazard a guess how many cars would park there, like if there's a tournament on. Hundred, hundred-and-fifty, I don't know. Like I never count, counted them all. But that's always been, it's a, it's an accident waiting to happen. And, and we're going forward with, with the pedestrian crossing that was requested by the Curling Club, I believe, this year, which is excellent. So yeah, I think, and as we get talking more, but the parking on this side, on the ball field side could alleviate that with any luck. But that parking on the berms, and I mean, it says no parking, but it's just, they park there anyway. Okay, thanks.
Mayor Pegg? Yeah, thanks Doug. The new, so I see some changes since the open house, obviously with the entrances. We sustain where it is and the parking, the lane, driveway going to the parking lot. Will that take, require any removal of any trees through that area?
Yes, it, it may. There are some storm damaged trees in the park and there's some trees that are just sort of, they're, they're standing dead wood right now. They've just reached the end of their natural life cycle.
No, no impact in mature, healthy trees?
Uh, I can't promise. You know, this is conceptual. We, we try to avoid them. Most of them, I'll try not to blind Counselor Robinson with this laser, but most of them are located right here. So there may be a, a few that are impacted by a re-grading exercise, but we haven't taken a look at that yet. So I can't promise, but.
That was the second question, I guess. So that, there's quite an elevation change between the existing gravelled dirt parking lot and the first soccer field.
It is.
And this looks like it's going right through there. So that whole area would have to be re-graded to.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And then I guess the rationale behind retaining a portion of the existing parking lot instead of turning it into green space as was originally discussed, especially the open house. So you said you had feedback from some groups who were feeling that there may not be enough parking with what's been proposed and suggested that be retained as parking. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Are there enhancements? Like I'm just, I'm thinking we're going to have more of the same problem we have now in regards to drainage, water collection, potholes. And I'm not, I mean, there may be times when we have some, some pressure on parking, but I guess the, the disadvantage of retaining parking there is we're less green space for the community to really use. Especially if it's retained at the gravel parking lot, which requires some maintenance from our staff on the, on the possibility that we don't want to have to walk from up on Frost or Vincent, let's say, to parallel park over in that area. So I'm just, I guess, not sure if it merits retaining that as a gravel parking lot.
Sure.
If you get as great green space that can be used by the community.
A hundred percent and that, you know, we agree. I think the suggestion was in the interim, right? You know, let's, let's keep what we have. But there are a lot of maintenance challenges with it. We understand that Ribfest was moved because of the dust that's, that's blowing up as people enter in there too. So we want to, we want to try and solve that. I think that, you know, if you were to return it to a turf grass condition, we've done projects before where we've actually had overflow parking. So big events that happen like once or twice a year, you can open it up, but you design the base so that you can still grow healthy turf grass, but it can withstand the weight of vehicles on occasion and not, you know, become rutted and full of potholes and turf.
That would make, that would make more sense. Okay.
Before I move on to councilman require, I, I just got a question. Did you not say earlier that you would, you had to conform with a bunch of rules for Parks Canada if you were to turn that into green space?
Yes. So I mean, they, they would like to see it, they would support it turning in, turning back into a turf grass condition. But they have regulatory authority for a thirty-meter setback, which is a sort of a faint line identified on our plan. But yes, we would need their approval to do anything because a lot of it is their property. I don't know if, if you have anything else to, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, other than to say broadly, they were super supportive of us turning it into green space. They're not super keen, from what I understand, to have the gravel pit, so yeah.
Okay. Counselor Moore?
Thanks, Mr. Sher. I share the concerns about thirty-five with the gravel lot because I know as we proposed to pave it, I got a lot of questions on why do we need to spend money? What's the value for that investment? And the more I looked into it, the more free I saw the value in having that asphalt surface. I really like the idea if we could update the plan to have, you know, if it's, if it's turf, but it's got a base on it, you can grab hairs when it's dry, that would be great. But at least it softens it, creates that green space. This new sidewalk over at number three, I was wondering what the rationale was to stop that at the corner instead of keeping it going all the way down Riverdale.
Sorry, just if you could tell me when I'm close. I'm not sure which three is.
Yeah, follow that side.
Oh, I think that's just maybe an oversight on our part. We were considering carrying it all the way. And if you couldn't make a connection on the water side, because there are some lots and it gets very pinched and narrow as you had, as you had West, Page Left, there is a section of sidewalk that you could link up with and still get that same, same link to. and still get that same same link to Beckwood Street and Victoria Park and downtown. It just wouldn't be all along the water.
Yeah, like I'd love to see that either terminate at the trail or continue on to another sidewalk. And I I really see the value in having that curb there just to regulate access. Um, oh, for the um, for thirty-two, for the widened path, for vendors or car shows.
Yes, yeah.
How's the access proposed from the parking driveway area?
So from the parking lot, we would have uh, uh, we call them a P-loop gate, so it's a lockable gate that that swings open, pedestrians can pass through it freely, but uh, it's controlled access, so staff would be able to unlock it and allow vendors or people setting up for the future performance stage, special event um, conditions.
You're talking right here or?
So it would be right off of here.
Okay, so they come down towards the thirty-two, no?
Exactly, yeah. Um, that's at ultimate uh, situation, but in the in the interim, they could very well come in off of this existing gravel parking lot if if we, you know, a lot depends on the phasing and what becomes the priority over the years. So uh, it's a bit of a puzzle piece to put together. Everything that you do is gonna have some sort of knock-on effect on other programming in the park or other infrastructure. But that's kind of the benefit of having a master plan. You have a roadmap and you can sort of identify those potential uh, problem areas and red flag them, have dialogue with the community, come up with a continued plan to make sure no one's put out.
And last car question is, uh, right now, there's a mini boat launch near the docks, where the docks currently are. Would there be similar car access to the five so that they can launch the Voyager canoes, or how, how would that be proposed?
Yeah, so um, I'll get in a little bit more to uh, the the beach and and this sort of central hub. But one of the uh, features that we considered was a new uh, car top-sized vessel, canoes, kayaks, stand-up paddle boards could park in that uh, smaller twenty-five to thirty-five car parking lot and easily access uh, a new pier in that location.
So the only concern I have is that the Voyager canoes are on trailers. So if we lose that access, a lot of those events, paddle fest and.
Right, okay.
Down there. So if there was some way we could maintain, not a full boat launch, but something.
Yeah, so there's um, a- again, everything that we're proposing in here, we would wanna run it under the lens of uh, AODA or even something more stringent. Um, because it doesn't cost anymore to do a lot of these things, but there are a lot of docks now that are fully inclusive and accessible. Um, you know, you can uh, there's uh, steps on the edges of docks that we've done before that allow people with mobility uh, challenges to more easily get in and out of uh, a small vessel. Yeah.
Thanks. Counselor McKenna.
Thanks very much. On the big features, this uh, this is a recreation park. It's not a nice uh, park to stroll through and sit under the trees. It must be ninety percent recreation and parking and maybe ten percent feel good about being in nature. Is there a name for that park?
I disagree. I I think Lower Reach actually does a really good job of providing that um, sort of passive uh, experience as well. Uh, it's the longest stretch of publicly accessible waterfront in town. Um, I think the town has done a really good job of maintaining a a nice natural edge uh, with moan access throughout. Um, it's not completely vegetated. All the views of the water are sort of framed, if you will. Um, I think it's actually a very, it's got a lot going for it above and beyond active rec and programmed uh, facilities and amenities. Um, and it and it can only uh, get better with time.
So that's the sweet spot that you tried to find.
Yes, yeah.
My question on parking is, you know, why four fifty? Was that to total up the number? And you talked about the parents rushing in. Did we use any like that geo-fencing or crowd counting? Have we?
We we have, we have a a table uh, that we created with a count of facilities, uh, you know, junior soccer, baseball, uh, beach with uh, an area performance uh, stage that accommodates an area, and we calculated that to uh, a reasonable headcount. And then considered the fact that because this is a destination park, while there are efforts to make this uh, accessible to pedestrians and cyclists locally, it's still a lot of people that are coming from out of town. It's not always practical to assume that everybody is gonna find their way there by bike or foot.
The Eastern Ontario Recreation Summit was just held, and they gave some data on the Beckwith Park and another park, and the consultant came in and did the, using cell phones, tracking. And they could tell you how many people use the park, the income of the.
Yes, yeah.
It it's fascinating.
It is.
So I wonder, you know, as we, as the town develops this over time, that we get a little more precise with the numbers as we design it out. I'm a, I'm a fan.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm just trying to get this four hundred and fifty in office, it's too many.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, it's uh, we do it for, uh, we saw traffic counters on the way into town today. So why couldn't we do it for pedestrians? I think it's totally a valid point and a great suggestion.
Thanks.
Counselor Quinn.
Thank you. You have a lot of information here for us.
Pardon me?
I said, you have a lot of information here for us.
Yeah, it's it's a thick document.
Excellent. So um, some of my concerns are as we are laying asphalt down, I think we need to be thinking about products that the water can flow through. I think that's something we need to be thinking about all over as we do builds. So I I I hope that that can be put into this. And the other one, Council Maguire brought up what I was thinking too, is people being able to have their vehicle accessible to the water, like the Voyager canoes or there could other people coming with a canoe or kayaks or whatever, so that they can get to the water so they can get their vessels in there. So that needs to be something that we need to be, yeah, keeping aware of.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, um, you know, there are uh, just on your first point about uh, permeability of materials, um, it would be even a challenge for us to uh, uh, have parks approve a paved pathway along there. There's um, you know, it's a decision you have to make, uh, and I think Director Clark is gonna talk about this a little bit later in the agenda with the trail standards. Um, there's some materials that are very difficult to maintain in our climate, um, and maintain that level of accessibility. The friction, the stability, allowing for uh, maintenance vehicles to come over top and service it regularly. Um, so we have to strike a balance, but yes, uh, in terms of environmental resiliency and sustainability, even if we do have a hard-surfaced uh, paved area, and you know, that is what we're proposing for the parking lots, there are ways that um, the stormwater runoff can be uh, filtered through bioswales, rain gardens, that sort of thing. We've employed those techniques before, and they're uh, again, they're not uh, uh, they're not a, an added cost to a project. It's just part of of doing it. So less piping, um, more promotion of infiltration into the ground.
Just one other point. Um, I I do agree with you. I think there's a lot of people use the park. I don't think it's just for sports. And I think that needs to be promoted. And uh, well, we need to to have this as a beautiful place for people to go and people to realize they can go. You don't have to be playing a sport to go there and enjoy it. And a lot of people do, even now, you know. Drive by there many times and you see people down there sitting with their morning coffee, washing the water, so.
It's probably one of the most popular pastimes of Lower Reach is going down with your newspaper and a coffee and parking under the mature pine trees, which makes me cringe a little bit, but enjoying the view of the water. Like, that's, that's the thing with waterfront parks. People wanna get as close to the water as possible. Yeah.
We're lucky to have it here.
You're very, you're very fortunate. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor Panko.
Yeah, just back to the parking lot for a moment. So we've budgeted an amount this year to complete that project potentially this year. Uh, but recognizing we're on a landfill, uh, have we done any preliminary engineering work or test drilling holes to see um, how much of a challenge this may or may not be?
Uh, so through the chair, that's a great question. Uh, we have not yet done any of the preliminary work, but we're in the preliminary conversations to figure out how much that's gonna cost. Obviously, with uh, contaminated sites, the costs can ratchet up fairly quickly. Uh, but we've got some preliminary work, we think, or some preliminary numbers. We do think that it will fit within the budget that we uh, did receive from the likes of yourselves for our capital this year. So we are basically poised, should this uh, be approved in the next uh, week or so, are poised to move very quickly to figure that out.
So did you see, what what's your timeline, do you think, for the completion of that area?
Ideally this year. Unfortunately, it will not be ahead of August, which is, I think, the key piece that we were looking for. But um, we would wanna make sure that we're as close to to, well, we we obviously would work around a whole week. So, yeah, I'm assuming that's what you're getting at. Okay.
Anything, anything else?
There's lots. There's lots. Um, I could talk about the pathway system. We've, we've kind of talked a little bit about it, and I think you're gonna hear more um, from Director Clark as well. Um, the the PXO, the pedestrian crossover has been mentioned. Again, our traffic consultants had had taken a look at a couple of different locations and felt this, this one is entirely appropriate. I think this is more or less where the town had it on their radar anyway. Somewhere near the Squash and Curling Club seems to work well uh, in connecting with the uh, existing, the main loop of the park. And it would be adjacent to the entrance drive. So there's um, some opportunities there with electrical servicing. So that, that crossover needs new electrical service, so does the parking lot for proper lighting and and accessibility, and the driveway. Um, so we had suggested in the design brief, um, sort of establishing a hierarchy of pathway types within the park. Consider proper width, uh, uh, heavy duty for those areas that are gonna need larger service vehicles, like accessing uh, high-mass lighting or delivering uh, material like compost or top dressing fields, that sort of thing. Um, consider the materiality, um, site furnishings at proper uh, intervals so that uh, there's rest stops for uh, people that are more mobility challenged or, you know, the, we have an aging population in Canada, so um, this is gonna be something that's gonna be a requirement. Uh, wayfinding is another thing that um, that uh, should be incorporated as well. Not just directional or site identification, but identifying how far it is to the next uh, bench or how far it is to downtown. People want to, if they're not aware and not familiar with the park, they wanna know what's ahead of them, and they can plan their route accordingly. Um, the fitness center that's in the park now, at some point, it's also gonna reach the end of its natural uh, serviceable life. And um, there's a lot of uh, new uh, static fitness equipment out there in the market. And you could actually look to reestablish the participation park that was so popular here in the eighties. I think some of the equipment just got removed, like within the last decade. So um, I think it served you well and um, uh, you know, it offers an opportunity to create sort of a fitness loop. Um, yeah, so there's other considerations with the pathway hierarchy as well. Um, snowshoeing, winter use, um, fat biking, cross-country skiing. Those could all be activities that would sort of open up the park and make it more of a year-round uh, destination. So.
Just on the pathway, I talked to Director Clark about this, particularly closer to the water and lighting, like the safety audit. There's people that are walking through it, and it's very dark. So is that whole path intended to be?
So that's, that's, that's up for discussion. Um, that was our feeling, um, because it's such a a heavy-used link um, from Old Sly's. The town has invested in the new sidewalk that crosses the bridge to get you to the park. It seems a natural to take you all along the uh, Smith Falls Heritage Walk and connect you with uh, Victoria Park and and Beckwith and downtown beyond. But again, that's something Parks Canada would have some regulatory uh, control over um, as part of the uh, Rideau Corridor landscape strategy.
One of our lighting was thirty meters back.
I don't know if that's practical, but um, you know, there's certainly things that can be done with proper cutoffs and light levels to make sure that it's dark sky compliant, so that you don't have that light pollution sort of bleeding into the sky and uh, you know, impacting the view for the people that live across the river or for people that are coming to the park for other uses at night.
Counselor.
Yeah, just picking up on that point, um, that you were talking about along River Street.
Well, the whole park should be.
The whole park, yeah. But the the portion along River Street, I mean, we're not winter maintaining it now. Uh, the portion along River Street seems to me, last term, we got money to to pave it, right, up to Broadview. Uh, Parks Canada wanted an archaeological study done, which we did, and then they said no on basis of they're doing a master plan, so. They're gonna have to be part of this and hopefully.
We did consult with them on preliminary concepts, and we had input from, I think, five diff, four or five different departments um, and uh, bodies within Parks Canada, and um, you know, they didn't come back with any uh, showstoppers, but you know, we do know that they do have uh, regulatory control over, so we would need to check in with them. Shall I keep going? I'll maybe, I'll maybe jump through. I know that you've got the design brief in front of you, and there's lots to talk about. Um, I'll maybe jump through the um, uh, the relocation, the expansion of some of the additional rec facilities. I will tell you um, what we're losing in this plan. So we would be losing uh, the T-ball that we've talked about already, and one Little League uh, field that has, seems to have moderate use right now. But we've been able to accommodate that loss in um, a purpose-designed um, Little League diamond in the core of the park that could have a movable pitching mound. Um, you know, there's, uh, while we've tried to expand the other two softball diamonds in the Civitan area um, to uh, make it a, make them bigger, right, because there's a lot of home run balls. They're probably undersized. People are hitting the ball further. So we wanna find that balance between, you know, still making a home run achievable, but also making it uh, a challenge. Um, so we think that we can accommodate uh, the Little League use, so you would still have, you know, those younger players could grow and stay in Smith Falls and continue to play and eventually graduate to to softball, when their knees get bad like mine. Um, so I know you'll have lots of other questions about what's relocated, uh, what's been expanded. It's all in the design brief. Uh, feel free to uh, to go through that. Um, and I I do wanna make sure we talk about the uh, the Gleason Dog Park uh, relocation because that was something that we saw a lot of friction with the um, the home run balls uh, coming over their Civitan Diamonds one and two and into uh, either parked cars that are trying to find a space along the outfield fence or into the dog park itself. So um, this plan proposes to relocate Gleason Dog Park um, up to the intersection of the highway and Old Sly's. And as that Civitan one is reconstructed, we would need to uh, put a high-mast outfield uh, mesh along there. So that would need to be studied. But um, they're not giving up any space in that dog park. It's increased moderately on this plan, but it would still have, you know, appropriate shade tree plantings, uh, small breed, large breed areas. Uh, having it close to the road gives us an opportunity to service it with water. Um, we could include lighting that would be on the backside of the softball diamond. Um, so you wouldn't have to put in a separate lighting system necessarily. And then again, having a dedicated parking cell that the town could maintain year-round for about twenty cars seems appropriate. If, before this gets built, if you choose to accept this plan as is, um, you could uh, consider an alternate surface material. Right now, turf grass, I think, is okay. There's some some worn spots, but that's to be expected. If the dog population in Smith Falls doubles in ten years, when you come to do this relocation exercise, you might want to look at like a decomposed granite chip surface that's pet-friendly and a lot easier to maintain. You're not bringing your muddy dogs back into your car to, to bring them home like that.
So, so Doug, the, on the sequencing, and at the end, are you going to talk about, like, some things make sense to start with? That's why we're doing the park a lot. But if we know that our parks, let's say we approve it, do we go ahead and start planting trees now, knowing that it's probably five years? Can we take, leverage those opportunities?
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's part of the, that's part of the, the benefit of having a plan is for things like regular tree planting. We're talking with somebody earlier, is that if you have this master plan in front of you, you can place, start to place trees and establish a new succession canopy in areas where they're not going to be impacted by future expansion of facilities. If there's a commitment to this, to this plan in principle.
Well, the worst case, we've got more trees.
That's not a bad problem to have. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. We did hear some resistance to the proposed location for the dog park. And concerns, of course, of fly balls still going in there, the netting. Hopefully we solve that, but it'd have to be pretty high, I guess, to catch some, some of them. But concern about just dogs reacting to vehicle traffic going around that corner at speed. Concerns about shade, of course. So you're saying this is something that could be later in the redevelopment. I guess it all depends on future councils. If they decide they wanted to do it earlier, it could happen earlier. Especially understanding today is a problematic situation where problems you described are going to continue every year. And the risk of conflict, the risk of damaged vehicles, the risk of someone getting hit with a ball or a dog getting hit with a ball continues until we make the changes there. So council may be motivated to make a change here quicker and certainly much sooner. But were there other locations potentially considered? I want to, I had mentioned and we discussed at the open house, which is up Riverdale. And I don't know if that is, if there's setback requirements or like, is it concerns about neighbors up there who may?
Yeah, yeah. I, we, we did explore, and you can look at the other three concepts that are in the report. We did explore a couple of different locations. The noise and the vehicular traffic, I think, would be particularly impactful to have it along that narrow stretch of Riverdale. The spaces, the space is there, it could be accommodated. But that's one of those areas that's, you know, sort of loosely programmed right now that offers that passive park experience. So we didn't feel that it was appropriate there. We actually did look at locating it at the waterfront up in the north corner, just off of this parking area here. And we felt that that didn't necessarily send the right message to sort of take water, waterfront, valuable and important waterfront away from, from residents and allocate it to our canine friends. So we felt that this was probably the best place for it. I could say if those ball diamonds weren't in such proximity to where it is now, it's actually quite nice, the location that you have now. It's long and linear. There's lots of shade from the adjacent natural vegetation along the rail corridor. But I think that some of those concerns that you have about traffic and noise are no different than what they're experiencing currently when the trains go by. And I think a lot of that stuff can be mitigated, the distance from the road and that intersection. You know, we've, we've seen some in Ottawa. There's one that I go to regularly and it's right along the four seventeen. And the dogs don't really seem to care. I'm sure there's some that do. But, you know, with proper planting and screening, I think we can, we can mitigate it.
So going back to the current location, understanding that it, the most cost-effective solution would be to leave it where it is. Would it be more cost-effective to leave it where it is? So then you have more room for parking where the dog park potentially is proposed for. And then invest in the netting in the outfield on that side, on that diamond, rather than completely reorienting the two diamonds and having to move the dog park.
Yeah, I, that's, that's definitely a possibility. We considered that. But, you know, the, both the ball diamonds have aging electrical and lighting infrastructure. So that presents an opportunity and the fencing is quite tired on both of those diamonds as well. So we're sort of looking at it as an opportunity to, to, to address the dog park issue, improve that condition and improve the ball diamonds at the same time. What's nice about having the paved parking cells? We had some discussions with the Squash and Curling Club. There may be an opportunity to have an operational, perhaps even a funding agreement with, with them because they, they need parking as well. They don't currently have that. So off, off-peak uses could be very beneficial. We see it a lot happen with, I'll use the example of a school next to a park where they have linked parking cells. The schools are empty during the weekend when there's lots of tournaments. So all that visitor, visitor traffic can take advantage of the, the school, school lot. So it would be a similar situation like this. And you wouldn't have such a long ring road along the outfield of those diamonds to maintain in the winter. Cause it's, it's gravel and it's got some of the similar pothole challenges that the core area of the park has now.
And I presume you would not be able to put that East Prairie parking lot in without reorienting that ball diamond anyway?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
You, the, the parking lot there, you couldn't put that in without reorienting?
Correct, correct. Yeah. Yeah. Nothing on the Civitan site, as it's shown here, could happen without at least rebuilding one of those diamonds. So that's, that's a big commitment for sure, addressing anything over there, unless you put up the high mast mesh. Which is still expensive.
Yeah, it's either on one side to protect the dog park or on the outfield and the other one to retract, right? I think so. There's different ways of looking at it.
Exactly. Yeah. But it's, it's one of those things, it's much cheaper to do it while you're in there, setting in new lighting footings and, you know, you can dig that, the poles for the mesh as well or hang them, hang the mesh on some of the light fixtures, light standards.
But I just don't think the current, current environment there is sustainable. I think we're just, it's just a problem we need to have and it has happened, right? So we want to, we want to mitigate risk. I think we would need to focus on that sooner.
For a turn it over to Councilman Warren, question. Did I dream this or was I told at the meeting at the, at the community hall that the vegetation in the current dog park was not conducive?
That's, that's what we've heard. There's some toxicity. We didn't look at all the vegetation in detail, but yeah, if dogs are eating even some, some native apple trees, which, which I know are in there, they can have upset stomachs. But I don't think, I don't think there's anything poisonous, like toxically poisonous. So.
I just thought that'd be a really good reason to move it.
There's, there's data out there on, you know, plants that provide that type of health hazard to canines and humans.
Councilman Warren. The dog park, yeah, definitely the most controversial part, I'd say, of the plan. The big thing that I didn't realize until now was that it was still going to require the netting.
It would, yes.
How much, how many linear meters of netting here versus if we had put it up where it needs to go, where everything exists now?
I can say that it's less, but I don't have exact data. Comfortably, I can say that it's less. We do have an opinion of probable cost in the appendix of the report. If you flip to the very end, we have it identified in there, the approximate linear meters.
So I love the idea of closing the ring road back here. I love the idea of getting services and more organized parking. But I'm not sure I'm sold when this is not pushed back against the relocation of the dog park, to, to support it. And this is the only thing that's really, makes me hesitate on the, on the plan right now. For me, there's the water service for the Kinsman Pavilion. Is that coming from Old Sly's over here?
The water service actually runs all the way through the park along here. So we didn't, that's all we have data on is that one line. We don't have information on the secondary feed for that splash pad in the Kinsman building. I'm sure it's out there somewhere, but that's, that's what we know now. Presumably there's a water service in Old Sly's that would be servicing the Squash and Curling Club.
Okay. So I guess my question from that is, is there a way to put this around thirty-four, thirty-five? If there's a water line going through there, or is there a way to reconfigure the diamonds as proposed to fit it in adjacent to the Curling Club?
Yeah, that's not a bad, that's not a bad thought. Those diamonds are, you want as close to a north-south alignment as possible for player's safety. For evening games in particular, when the sun is low, you want it equitably balanced between the two opposing teams. That's pretty much for any sport. That's why you see the tennis courts perfectly aligned in the north-south. That's probably the only facility that we were able to get that in perfectly. Although there is, you know, some latitude with that. We could, we could play with that and explore that a little bit more. We might have to give up a little bit of parking to accommodate it.
Just a comment too, if I could. When we, when I first got here a couple of years back, we looked at the netting. And I can't remember the, the near footage, but what they did say was that it would actually take up space, so we'd lose the road. So we wouldn't gain anything and we'd lose the access to the entire road if we were to put it up the way that it is now to divide. So.
Thank you. And the mayor and Councilor Quinn will know the dog park's very dear to my heart. My first term, we, my wife and I raised money into council matched, similar to what they did to Perth, in Perth. So the land, it's called Gleason Dog Park because the land was donated by the Gleason family who at one time owned, I think, the Heritage House as well. So I certainly kind of cringed when I, when I read this. The dog park is so much more than it was when we first started. I think we got the fencing from, old fencing from the Ottawa Airport. And I, and did it on the cheap and, and they did a great job. And since then, the amenities that come, the shelters, the benches, you know, the users that built benches that are still there. So I'd be interested in these comments and my dog's gone now, so I, I'm not there. So my intention would be to go down and talk to them. I know there's regulars, as you, if you're a dog park user, you know, there's a group that comes at certain times of day and it's well-used and it's used from the surrounding. I know people in Perth that come to use the dog park. They don't have one presently, but they're gonna. So I'm, I'm going to have to think about it. I, I like, I guess my one question would be, it doesn't look, I think the present dog park is somewhere around an acre.
Not sure.
I think so.
It's about five-eighths of an acre.
Five-eighths. So is that the same size as this?
Yeah, we compared it on the, on the CAD mapping and it's what we've been able to sort of shoehorn in here is just slightly bigger than what exists.
Okay. So and then also there's, because we have a large dog park and a small dog for different sizes of ducks. So that'll be included, of course, in this.
Yep, hundred percent.
And I like the parking. I love the water because we tried to put water over there. There's no way to put water over to the, to the present dog park. So that was always a big concern. The noise could, could cause concerns with neighbors. But I, you know, I have to declare a conflict on that because I live over there. So I'll have to, I like, I like the design. I like the, the cost is something I often, I imagine it's in this thing here. So the cost is a big, big change down there. And, you know, I, if we're, we're doing things in stages, I think, you know, we're taking low-hanging fruit now in terms of the big parking lot, which is, makes sense. So, yeah, I, I, there's a lot of things I like about it. But I certainly like the dog park the way it is now. And, you know, they talked about, we talked about the screening and I'm like, well, just put some signs that don't park there. You know, there's parking over by the curling ring.
There, there are signs.
I know there's signs. I know. I know there's signs. And, you know, the netting was, I, I, I remember it came up in budget and it was, it was pretty expensive. And I thought, you know, just park here at your own risk and then. And I also think, and I don't know if anybody in the audience could confirm this, I think now in the lob ball games, if you hit a home run, you're hit. I think, but.
It's a good rule. Yeah. I mean, they probably use like flight restricted balls as well. That's another regulatory thing that you could enforce.
Yeah. So anyway, that's my comments thus far on the dog park. I like, I like what, what you've got here. I'm just emotionally attached to the other one.
I, I totally appreciate that. You know, it is very highly used. My dog Pepper goes there on occasion. She gives it five stars. But, you know, not to be cheeky, but dog parks are very well, they're important to communities. We, we discovered that residents of Smith Falls that use this dog park really value it. And for a lot of people, it's a, it's a great social connection that they have with, with their community because they might not be going to lower reach for anything other than to walk their dogs. So I think it's a really important feature to maintain. If it's not where we've shown it, somewhere in lower reach or somewhere nearby, I think it is some, it's an asset that the town, I hope, recognizes is very important.
And through the chair, even though we have a, a nice dog park down there, people still take their dogs into the ball fields. And that was the whole start of it, that I got a phone call. People are running their dogs in the ball fields. That's not healthy for the kids. I'm like, well, I took my dog to the ball diamond. Yeah, but you're right. So let's get a dog park going. So, but they still do it. And this, in this configuration, it might encourage people not to do that.
It's a, it's a universal problem, dogs on ball fields. Some municipalities insist that there's no gates in the outfield fence for maintenance vehicles because they don't want people to have their dogs in there sort of enclosed. Other municipalities say, no, we're going to put gates everywhere, but they're going to be locked. So it's, it, it's not, it's not an uncommon issue.
Okay, thanks.
So just going back to some of the previous comments about this being a, an issue and it's going to take us years to fix it, I think there's more issues along the way. And, and looking at the space, and you did mention you considered it, but utilizing the, the existing parking lot, part of that existing parking lot for the dog park. And I appreciate it, it means that it may not be available for overflow parking. And it is close to the waterfront. At the same time, it's a residence who are taking their dogs here on a very frequent basis, daily basis, sometimes twice a day.
Yeah.
And so it would enable us to really get maximum benefit probably out of that part of the park. And by moving the, the dog park there in the next year roughly, let's say, if we're, if we're going to have this, establish a parking lot there this year and then moving the dog park, that would, and perhaps having additional parking just off of the tray, the roadway in to accommodate for the dog park, we're eliminating the issue across the road. And then when it comes to expansion of the ball diamonds, we have that service for the back, we could then utilize to try and help get the ball diamonds where they need to be. And we have no need for netting, neither on that side at all. And it'd be something we could fix. It's a solution to a problem we could, we could enable fairly quickly and probably fairly cost-effectively too.
Yeah, the, it, it is a great idea. The only hurdle I'd suggest is that it's not town property. That whole triangular pieces, there's a, can only guesstimate, but I think the property line, Stephanie, if you could correct me, is something like this. So Parks Canada owns everything north of it. So it would have to be some sort of agreement with, with Parks Canada and have to get their approval.
Okay.
As well. So that's, that's the only caution I would have to, to that approach.
So we engage in a conversation with Parks Canada if there's sort of consensus that maybe somebody will pursue?
The only other, if I could, the only other issue or consideration is that in terms of opening up the waterfront, now we're limiting the waterfront access to a certain group of people. And so we'd have to be really conscious about where it is. I think it's also a smaller, slightly smaller footprint. But I mean, we, we did consider that and it's, I think, in a couple of different iterations. But the intention was to make sure the waterfront is, is as wide open as possible to all folks, not just a limited group.
We sold a thirty-meter setback Friday. We sold a thirty-meter setback, ready for anything along there, right? So there'd still be that band along the waterfront that could be utilized by.
Yeah. But it was, I'm sorry, not but, but that would also limit our ability to, you know, stretch a trail through and things like that, so.
We'd have to keep that in mind, I guess, and the orientation of it, how we would
Yeah.
arrange it, because there's a lot more area there, I guess, does it all matter how it would be oriented.
Um, yeah, I mean, if you put a, if you needed to put a dedicated parking cell, the area starts to shrink a little bit, but it's, you know, it's certainly something we could look at again. Um, I ca- I can't remember offhand, but at least one of the concepts, earlier concepts that is in the report, um, shows a potential location for it there.
Yeah.
Water. Um, hearing that there's a water line and seeing that the majority of the area is outside of the thirty-meter setback, I'm also very supportive of moving it in the concept plan from to the thirty-four, thirty-five area. Um, I think for thirty-four, for the pump track, that would be better located up at the skate park anyway. Um, and if we move that with the parking stalls, the odds are the, the dog park's not gonna be busy on Canada Day or when there's a big event going on. That's more formal parking there. Um, and then if we're losing spots net on the thirty-five parcel, we could always utilize this as overflow parking, maybe make it a little bigger with that space, so I would look to the committees just to see if we have a consensus for that or not, because I really want the whole community to be behind the plan. And right now, I know this is, it's holding a lot of people back from being able to really get by here.
All right, councillor McKenna.
Well, I'm, I'm not on board with that, councillor McGuire, if that was your question. And I'm glad councillor Miller suggested we do this over a couple of meetings because we're, we're into, we're planning a new park by this, by committee and I don't wanna go there. Feedback's fine. And I was at the public meeting and I've been tracking the, the, the questions I heard from, uh, dog lovers was they, if we weren't losing, we just wanted to make sure they were gonna get equal or something better. It wasn't, don't touch this, it can't be moved. People were very reasonable that I talked to this. Okay, once they got the information, th- they weren't raising placards or yelling or, they were saying, well, I have the same, well, I have these amenities. And then I was hearing, okay, I'm glad to have that question answered. So I don't think it's as controversial as what I'm hearing from this discussion. I think it's, experts have offered this as a solution. The other, if we want it, if we don't want it there, there's other parks in town. If it doesn't fit, then we can move it. There's other places to put a decent dog park, so. I don't wanna get a committee redesigning this plan because then we're into the plop. What was it?
Plop design.
Plop design, uh, based on our passion about one piece of it, but it, it all, everything is a ripple as soon as you change that. So, yeah, that's all I gotta say on that.
Um, we're starting to get into a broad on this, and the last question goes to councillor Brennan.
No, no, I just, I just, I'm not gonna give my opinion tonight. This is what, uh, this guy's here to give us, gives us the plan. We ask questions. I asked my questions. Now I'll take it back and read this terrific document here and then, uh, form an opinion at some point. This is, this is a generational type of thing we're doing, so. That's it.
You got anything else you would like to add?
Um, I, I could add, uh, a little bit of discretion about two other features if you're willing to hear it now, or I can pause. Yeah, so, um, there's a couple of things on here to, um, Stephanie and Tana challenged us with, uh, a question, what do teens want in their park? Those teens that are not, um, engaged with, uh, you know, registered sporting clubs. Um, so we went and did a session with, uh, Duncan J. Schooler and SFDCI, a design charrette, if you will. And one of the common themes that we got back from, from those students was they wanted a space, uh, like a plaza space where they could gather. So they talked about, um, you know, lawn games like, uh, cornhole and table tennis, um, checkerboard tables, that sort of thing, a hang space. So we felt that the, um, area immediately adjacent to the Kinsman Pavilion would be an appropriate location for that. There would be lots of, um, you know, legitimate users coming to and through, uh, the site in that location. Um, so you would, uh, probably reduce incidence of mischief in this location. And then also it ties in nicely with, um, at some point, the, um, playgrounds that are right here now will need to be replaced, so we were suggesting to relocate them here. The splash pad, when it comes up for life cycle renewal, um, would be more or less located in the existing, uh, location. The other thing, um, that, uh, that came up at our first engagement and through stakeholder meetings was, uh, the idea of a beach. We realized that there's been challenges with operating a beach, um, up in the Central Basin. It suffers from a lack of parking as well as some other operational challenges. We've shown this on the plan, but I, I just wanna caution you that it does require a lot of extra study. I know a lot of people came forward during the second meeting suggesting that the current might be too strong there. They thought that there could be, uh, you know, conflict with boating traffic. Um, we don't know what the bathymetry of the riverbed is in that location, so we're not entirely sure if it's appropriate for a beach. Um, it would need Parks Canada approval, so that is a placeholder for now, um, subject to further study. Okay, programma- programmatically, I think it works really well with the, um, with all the adjacent, uh, amenities that exist now and are proposed. So just, uh, one last slide I'll leave you with, if you don't mind. So, um, yes, uh, Director Clark has asked for you to approve this document in principle. I understand that you need more time to, uh, properly consider it, but we hope that staff and council can, commit to this document as a long-range plan, as your new roadmap, and it will inform, uh, decisions that, uh, that happen in the future. Even simple improvements like planting a tree, where to plant a tree next year. I'll look at this plan. Uh, please continue to engage with the community. I'm not suggesting that the plan needs to be updated, um, you know, every year. I certainly wouldn't wait another almost fifty years to do it, but, um, you know, more regular check-ins, I think. You could even consider, uh, forming an advisory committee, uh, like a citizen advisory committee to help with, uh, some of these decisions. But ultimately, um, uh, thank you for your time through, through the chair. Thank you, council, for your time and, and listening to this and, um, we hope that, uh, you can see a lot of the, the values, um, of your constituents reflected in this plan.
Well, thank you very much for your, uh, for your thorough, um, uh, response to our, uh, two concerns and, um, I re- I, I really appreciate the plan.
Thank you. Great questions. Enjoyed the discussion. Thank you very much.
Anything else? I'm gonna go sit down now.
Okay.
Just looking back to a committee of the whole in.
Next week?
A week.
An S three.
That one.
Yeah, if it takes an S three.
The next year.
Like special committee alone.
Um, i- if I may, Mr. Chair, um, I, I think given the, the gravity and scale, we, we need to allot the appropriate time. So we'll work with the clerk to find a suitable time. We had not planned on a special committee next week, but that seems a, a, a little bit soon. Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll schedule, uh, dedicated time to go through this.
Thank you. Okay, ten point two, Railway Museum Funding Memorandum of Understanding Report, Director Dobr.
Good evening. Um, so through the chair to council, uh, I'm here to seek some clarification, a little bit of direction on one of the budget items that we discussed for the twenty-twenty-five budget, and that's the contribution to the Railway Museum of Eastern Ontario. Uh, the memorandum of, uh, of understanding was prepared by staff and sent uh, to the organization and there was a few questions that came back. So, um, there were, uh, kind of four points within that, uh, memorandum of understanding, um, after staff had reviewed, um, the notes as well as the, uh, the video, uh, the live stream. So, um, from that, what came out of it was a, a contribution for twenty-twenty-five for fifty thousand dollars to be used for, um, capital expenditures or infrastructure. And, um, that there was a report that would come back to council for the use of the funds. Um, as well as any unused funds that being returned to the municipality, but there was some questions about the first three, so we're seeking some clarification about the timing of the, uh, of the contribution, whether it was for twenty-five, uh, twenty-twenty-five or whether it was a five-year commitment. Um, what the funds were to be used for. Was it at the discretion? Was it, uh, capital? And also, uh, was there to be a reporting function back to council on that?
Thank you. Councilor McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for being a spectator, Director Dobr. Um, I'm wondering, is there any precedent for this kind of an agreement with municipality and external organizations right now?
As far as, uh, through the chair, with Smith Falls, I, I wouldn't have the history based on that. Uh, I could only speak from my, um, my background and history. I've, I've seen it with, uh, hospital contributions. Um, so, so there's some precedent from that, from that perspective.
Okay, so I, you know, I'm glad we put this earmark in the budget and I wanna give the Railway Museum the money it needs to do capital and infrastructure projects this year and every year. Um, my hesitation with the way it's proposed tonight is that there's nothing written into this document that ensures the municipality's interests are maintained specifically. I can think of the kind of stuff that the Climate Action or Working Group is pushing towards with sustainability. Um, and our municipal heritage committee also has, uh, ideas on how capital infrastructure projects should be carried out at designated sites. Um, there's nothing in here that would reference the standards and guidelines for the conservation of historic, uh, places in Canada. Um, and there's nothing in here that says, okay, this year, this fifty thousand dollars is going to X project in the asset management plan or X or Y or whatever, uh, that needs to be done this year. So it's, it's hard to know, um, know what it's going towards. I think when it comes to, correct me if I'm wrong, with CIP or the Community Grant Program, the receipts are submitted and then the funds are paid out. Where, is that true?
I, I would have to refer back to the, uh, planned department, but I know that there's a, there's a certain, uh, scrutiny or, uh, sorry, I'm having trouble remembering the, uh, the names tonight, but there's certain descriptions and, uh, criteria that are met. Uh, but as far as when the payouts go, I would, I would have to find out, uh, confirm that.
So I guess just the issue of giving out the money before we get the financial report at the end of the year. If there's a cash flow issue where the money needs to be put up to, to get the project initiated, happy to do it, but I just would like to get that information of what we're, what we're helping pay for before we put the cash up, so. Um, I'm really glad this is a placeholder in the budget, but right now, this MOU for me doesn't outline what we're actually giving money for. And if we are giving it for capital and infrastructure, there should be that plan of that's what needs to be paid for this year, so I'd just like to have that information and get that written into the MOU before we, uh, we sign off.
Okay, uh, councillor Miller.
Thank you and thank you, Director Dobr. Um, so we were presented with the initial request for five years of funding and reminded by our CAO as one of the many conversations we've had about this, that it was for five years. So I voted accordingly, uh, and so, continue to support five years. As someone who runs a non-government-funded, not-for-profit, I can say that having a small bit of money you can count on each year, um, helps you operate more effectively. And so, yes, I would like to hear from the Railway Museum. I know they're working. They have a capital project list. They're working on an asset management strategy. They've done a full accessibility audit. I like everything I'm seeing so far and I, I look forward to them sharing those pieces when they're ready. Um, but I also don't wanna tie their hands. I wanna invest in their sustainability. I want them to be able to count on a little bit of money each year and not come back every year asking for the same amount, so. Um, I am supporting the five years. And while I would appreciate an annual, uh, update about how they're using their funding and certainly happy to suggest, um, that we're, we know we really need that roof done and, and, and to do that. I also wanna be cautious that we're not tying their hands for a small amount of money.
That's what we can.
Interesting. I, 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 I'm glad we're having a memorandum of understanding. It does cover off that this funding is used for major capital infrastructure in the, in the MOU, but I like your additions of an environmental, like, the environmental, uh, climate change work group and making sure it's compliant with historical as it does, which the board knows already that they're a national historic site and they're gonna follow those guidelines, but putting it in here, I think, is, is good. Time to tie hands. Asking council next year that this is a five-year funding ties hands up future council, so I don't mind fifty thousand every year and renewing it, but the council that day should uh, not have their hands tied either, uh, over the next five years. So I wanna give, and I'm happy, uh, wa- uh, signaling like we do with the hospital, this is something we're going to budget for every year, uh, pending approval by the council in the day though. So I like councillor McGuire's additional, uh, caveats. I don't know how, um, I also wanna maximize the flexibility, so if they wanna spend a hundred thousand on something, I want them to be able to leverage and carry that fifty over, because here it says, anything not spent has to be given back. So I don't wanna do that either to them. So I, I want it to be a success, uh, the right amount of, um, checks and balances, so adding something around the historical and climate change and, uh, yeah, but it, and I just don't know about tying future council's hands. So in principle, I wanna see it roll out over five years, but I can't commit to the next council.
Anyone else? Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, listening to councillor Miller, councillor McKenna's comments, um, I, it really, in my mind now, solidifies that this should be a project-based funding agreement. Uh, because the key word in councillor Miller's comments is operating when you're operating. Um, but we're not contributing to operating funds here. We're contributing to project funds. But we're not contributing to a project. And I think if we, if we're going to contribute to a project, as councillor McKenna says, maybe it's a hundred thousand that's needed one year, but it's twenty-five the next year and, like, every year the same as our capital budget. It's not gonna be the same amount every year. Um, I'd much rather see this go to a project-based MOU. And then that gives the trigger to send it through the climate group, send it through the MHC. Um, and then that gives them the opportunity to ask, you know, this year we've got fifty thousand earmark, but maybe next year when there's the roof, it's a hundred and fifty thousand. And we need to figure out how that fits into our budget and what we're able to contribute, but I don't, um, right now what this sounds like we're giving is operating funds and I'm not supportive of that because the, uh, as the RMO came to us and said that the operating budget's strong, the revenues are strong, we need help with the capital and infrastructure projects, so. Yeah, I, I wouldn't support it as it stands tonight.
Councillor Quinn.
Thank you. It's funny sitting here tonight and I thought we'd already discussed this in the comfortable decision. And I felt that the Railway Museum were thinking, okay, we know for the next five years, we're going to be getting this money. And they do have many things on the go over there. They do. They do have big capital projects that they have to, uh, fulfill, but they're also a great attraction to our town. This weekend being Easter weekend and, uh, I believe right now the rides are all sold out. So how many people does that mean they're bringing into town? Let's support them. Let's hit our tourists coming here. This is a wonderful museum. I was there years ago when it was nothing like this happening. Now they're ready to open up the new steam car and tell the history of it. So don't tie their hands. Help them. Help them to be able to move forward. And they come every year and they tell us what they're doing. If you want them to come more often, I'm sure they can. So that you do know where the money is going to, but don't tie their hands. They've asked for this for five years. There's nothing wrong with that. Can we, can it be changed at the next, uh, council when there's another election? Quite possibly. But right now, we're here. We're here at this table. Let's help them move forward and become, and stay as a major draw in this council. Let's help them move forward and become, and stay as a major draw in this council. We have two museums, and they draw people into Smith Falls. Don't, don't hinder that.
Mayor Pecow.
Thank you. I guess I go back to, I guess, my, my thought process when we made this commitment, and I think we, I certainly recognize that the council recognizes, the community recognizes, and so much of Western Ontario recognizes this as such a value class. And even at the travel tourism show on the weekend, I was there for a few hours on Sunday, and, um, a lot of people coming by our booths asked about the Railway Museum of Eastern Ontario. It's, uh, it's a popular spot, they're able to hand us materials and try to help promote it along with all the other stuff that was happening. And in my mind, it was, it was a commitment to capital, and so I'm sort of certainly supportive of providing fifty thousand dollars, uh, this year for capital. And because I think the, the operational side, I think we've seen them come a long way. Been, and they're running a lot of programming, a lot of events, and, and drawing a lot of success, and that is helping sustain them. Right, in my mind, the bigger challenge was those big capital items that come up that just make it very difficult to find the money for. And not that I think we would ever pay for that ourselves, but we can, we can provide a foundational fund that can enable them to then attract, get other grants, uh, get some support from the community, or things like the roof. I think that was the one that we certainly looked at as saying it's a big need. And, and I respect Counselor McGuire's comment about sustainability, and, uh, the preference we would have probably would be for, if we're going to make a big investment in the roofs that will often need to be replaced for the next hundred years, right? And ultimately, it's a board's decision how they would want to replace that installed asset. Well, I think we can certainly say our preference on it's, it's not a certain way, but I think ultimately, it's a decision of the board how they would proceed. So I, I'm supportive, so when it comes to, I guess, option one, or maybe it's option four, I think an option four possibly, because it sounds like we have a couple of definitions from option one in order to gain consensus here to get, to get a decision tonight. So, um, major capital, so bullet point number two, funding for major capital infrastructure expenditures only, and I agree with that. Detail final financial report by council each, each, each year, but December thirty-first, how the funds were spent, I'm supportive of that, but I'm also supportive of a carryover. And so if there was, if, if they decided that, uh, they want to put this towards a major capital item, maybe it is a roof, maybe it's a, another need in preserving the asset, then come to us and, and just, words of business case to carry that forward into next year. So I, I wouldn't be agreeable to bullet point number three. And I'm not agreeable to bullet point number four. And once we commit the money towards our future, the current of future capital needs, then, um, that's unconditional. At that point, from the standpoint, once it's used towards capital, they, they come back and tell us. But as for, um, for a five-year commitment, I think it's like a lot of the other things we do. We've supported the hospital now, uh, for about seven or eight years. It's not, it's, it's an annual request, and we have a chance to consider that every year, and we, we fulfill that request every year, recognizing the value it brings to our community. There's always a risk a future council may change the mind on that. And I see this in the same light, so I think in principle, I'm, I'm supportive of long-term capital support, uh, but I think we'd like the opportunity to discuss it every year.
Counselor Brennan.
Yeah, I, I agree with what, uh, what the mayor said. It's, it's undeniable the importance of, of the Railway Museum, uh, to town in terms of providing great events for our residents, but bringing people in. So, uh, I'm totally supportive of, uh, the funds and the funds being used for capital. Uh, I think that, that they've actually been very successful in, on the operation side to their, to their, uh, to, to salute them for, for bringing so many people and to help them operate. Uh, obviously, uh, that's not going to put a roof on, uh, but it will help them operate with, I would think, some sustainability. So, and I like to call, I like your comments about the hospital, I agree with that. Uh, I think it's a no-brainer, uh, even more so than the hospital in a way, because when we first started giving money to the hospital, I'm thinking, well, wait a minute, that's preferential purview. Like, we're, we're building roads and providing recreation and stuff to the people of town, and there's nothing more important than the hospital, obviously. So it's like, it's morally, it's, there's no question about it, but in order to, I would like to, I'd love to hear from, from the Railway Museum every year, because I know they're very successful. So, um, there must be some way to put that in a memorandum of understanding, and, uh, and I agree that the unspent funds, which I would be surprised to be very much, uh, given the need there, uh, be rolled over. And I'm not interested in, uh, having to vet projects through other committees of town and micromanaging, uh, a board of directors. I certainly don't support that. So those are my thoughts.
Counselor Miller.
So I think, um, the mayor and, um, uh, Counselor Brennan have summed it up really well, and when I use the word operating, I didn't mean operations, I meant overall operating of the organization. So I'm fine with, um, what the mayor has proposed, and, um, and so I'm, I'm just like that, add its to those bullets.
Well, I might as well throw my two cents where I can. Originally, I thought that we were committing, like, when we first discussed it following the, uh, presentation by, by Peggy, um, I thought that we were committing to five years. But then, when it came budget time and it got slashed by twenty-five thousand dollars, I went back and looked, and we didn't commit to anything, uh, over five years at that time during the budget process. So I, originally, I was going to say, no, um, we should be committing for the five years, uh, but I, after, after the discussion that's been, had, I, I would be inclined to agree with the mayor, Counselor Miller, uh, Counselor Brennan, that, um, we're trying to put it in the budget, same as we do for the hospital, um, and it's pretty much a given, uh, but we, they'll have to come and ask for it, I guess. But, uh, I would certainly hope that we wouldn't deny them the opportunity or deny them the funding, because they, uh, they deserve it, frankly. So, uh, it looks to me like you've got plenty of direction, put the, uh, put the stuff in there that, um, everybody wanted to see added. You can go ahead and summarize if you'd like.
Exact, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. That's exactly what I was going to do, is make sure that, that, uh, what I heard was, was correct, and that everybody agreed with that. From the first item, that it, the, uh, the intention is to fund it for five years, but it would be a yearly approval within the budget process.
Yeah, yes.
That it would be for, uh, capital projects.
Yes.
And that there would be a reporting function to, so that council is aware of what the funds were spent on?
Yes.
Uh, yearly? Okay. And that nobody's in favor of clawing back fun, unspent funds at this point, that, that they would carry over into the following year if they were unspent?
Correct.
Counselor McGuire, you got it? Yeah, I just want to note that I'm not in consensus with this. I think it's really unusual for council to take a different approach with one organization than every other organization, and I think the biggest challenge with our community grant process is that, uh, one set of organizations have to go through that, other community organizations that have properties in the town, uh, have these projects covered, but through the town policies. And the town policy is having a capital infrastructure budget that we debate every year and that we approve, and that we put towards our committees to get input, because we value those committees, we created them to make a stronger municipality, and use that input, because we can't be subject matter experts in every field, and we can't have the breadth of experience of what those committees bring. So it's really unusual for me to sit here and watch us decide to throw all those precedents away, um, and it makes no sense for me to create an operational budget for capital and infrastructure projects. So I don't understand, I don't understand how this is coming together, but I will respect the consensus that seems to have come together.
Got your direction.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're into item ten point three, Backyard Hen Pilot Project with Chief Tuesbr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recommendation this evening is that council approved the revised Backyard Hen Pilot Program Bylaw identified in Report twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five. Background, at the committee, the whole meeting on March twenty-fourth, committee endorsed the permitting of backyard hens in town Smith Falls. A proposed backyard hen bylaw was prevented or presented, uh, to the committee, and after much discussion, staff were directed to revise the pilot program bylaw and through the direct staff to conduct a survey with other municipalities that permitted backyard hens and provide the survey results, which are attached to the report tonight. The items that were included, uh, to remove from the proposed bylaw was the licensing and registration fees, site inspections, enforcement measures would be based on a complaint basis, permit properties that had corner lots, uh, to allow the hen coops and runs in the side yards, eliminate the requirement for roof enclosure on the hen runs, permit hens to roam in fenced backyards, remove the time restrictions, uh, remove the setbacks from places of worship and schools and businesses, use the current setback for residential property. Option one is to approve the bylaw as presented, and option two is not to accept the revisions to the backyard hen bylaw. That is the report.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Before, uh, before I ask if anybody's got anything to add, um, this has been debated to death, and, uh, we have two auctions before us. So what I'd like to see is either we approve it or we don't. That's what I would like to see. Is everybody in favor of that? Because the debate, the debate is going to end up exactly the same as it, as it has every other time, so.
I agree with you, we don't want to rehash all, uh, our arguments from before, I agree with you. But I do have a question on this report. May I?
Yes.
So just on, uh, I didn't recall the discussion on letting the hens run free in the backyard, I didn't recall that. I thought that, in my head, I always envisioned them staying within the coop, uh, so I wasn't sure about that. And then the other one was, uh, I thought we were going to try it as a pilot for a year and see how it goes, and evaluate it up. And so that, there was the only two things that I, uh, didn't recall discussing.
Through the chair, there was discussion about, uh, allowing the hens to roam free in the backyard so they could dust themselves. And the pilot project, uh, was originally proposed as a single year, uh, and then during the discussions over two or three meetings, it was talked about a two-year pilot project, uh, and we left that open for, uh, for the committee to make a decision on whether it was a single year or two year. We provided the survey results in this report to give, uh, the members an opportunity to see what other jurisdictions, uh, have done and are doing, uh, which included the comments from Toronto, both bylaw officers that manage it, um, and, uh, and left it wide open for you to make a decision on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had, yeah, I agree with the letting them, as long as they're contained in the yard, haven't moved just for the, kind of, less manure concentration in the same spot, but, um, the only three things I flagged from it was, uh, the question I had last time about we can put, uh, dog or cat waste to the garbage, but we can't put the chicken waste, and if there was, uh, what the reason is different between the two.
We contacted GIM and the presence of the clerk, um, and no, uh, animal excrement is permitted in garbage bags whatsoever. The fact that it happens during the spring and the fall, uh, it's one of the things that happened, but we contacted them and they said absolutely not. We determined that that's put in garbage bags, we won't pick it up.
The other, the second one was the sale of eggs is prohibited, and I was wondering what the advantage of having that here, because we've got all kinds of other bylaws on businesses and selling and, yeah.
Through the chair, when we looked at the regulation, uh, for regulating backyard hens, every backyard hen policy that was in place, pilot or permanent, strictly prohibited the sale of eggs. And my conclusion on that is certainly from a health standpoint, uh, the eggs aren't inspected, they're not checked, they're not tested, um, we have no idea how old the eggs are, they've sat inside or outside for a week or a month or a year, uh, so I think it's, uh, merely from a, from a, a health standpoint.
Last point is just the six point one eight, uh, says an applicant will provide a signed declaration, and I'm wondering if we could change that just to the town can provide information, educational materials, because if we're not going through with the licensing, there won't be an application process, am I right?
That's through the chair, that's correct. I think the purpose of the signed declarations is to ensure that we're providing the information and that they've received the information, saying that they fully understand, uh, the reasons for hygiene, and the reasons for containment, and the reasons that are contained within the bylaw, so that we can't say, when something does go wrong, they come back and say, I had no idea. This way, we've got a signed signature, if you want to do it, here are the rules, read it, um, or at least knowledge that you, you've read both the bylaw, uh, and the hygiene practices.
Okay, so, yeah, and I, I think that's a great idea, I just, um, how do we know if there's no process? What's the, I guess this just becomes part of, like, we'll share that as an information campaign, that they'll come in and they'll read the material and sign off?
Correct.
And then in turn two, we'll have an idea of roughly how many people are doing it?
Through the chair, that's correct.
And if somebody is doing it that hasn't done that, I guess, because by law, they come in and they do it and they sign it, or?
Through the chair, uh, as there's limited enforcement measures in here, it's based on complaint, if someone complains that their neighbor has acquired two, four, six, eight, ten chickens, um, and have not read the material and are not adhering to the bylaw, uh, then based on the complaint, it would be inspected, and there'll be some question at that time whether or not they did read the educational material, and if they've gone through the bylaw and fully understand the total confines of bylaw.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor, or, Counselor, you haven't been a Counselor in a long time.
No, I haven't been in a while, but, yes. Just a question regarding the side lots. So I know, I think Counselor McGuire brought that up, um, the last time we discussed this, so just, how do I understand, it stills be within a defense portion of someone's side yard, or how would that work?
Through the chair, yes, it was brought up, uh, properties that have corner lots and the permitting of, uh, the hen coops, the runs in the side yards. If they choose to allow the hens to run free, it would have to be fenced. That was part of the conditions that were listed, uh, in there, uh, in the original one, as well as when we talked about the fenced-in backyards, that they could roam free. So that would have to be fenced around the perimeter.
Okay. I'm sort of supportive of a declaration, and I think, I think of a declaration confirming that they have received the information and that they are, whether it's online electronically or whether it's they come in and sign, uh, what signature, either way, I think it's important that they have some, some confirmation that they received the material and abide by the rules, right? But, um, other than that, uh, I appreciate, the, the feedback was good to see, and it, not surprising, I guess, the numbers are not high anywhere. It's only a, really a handful of homes and people in, in most municipalities have it, that people are taking advantage of it. So I think it's probably suggestive that, and what we don't want will have here, whether it's half a dozen, or ten, or twelve, or twenty, it's probably not going to be a, a significant portion of population who would take advantage of this, and therefore, I don't see it'll be a big issue when it comes hopefully to enforcement, and I, I like the way that it's been written, uh, and I, I provide some hesitation. The last one was discussed, I'll provide my support tonight.
Okay. Can I have a show of hands, how many are capable?
Yeah. Well, I'm not going to do my usual speech. I will say that, um, this, this, uh, I don't support this, I don't support the other bylaw. I think this bylaw, uh, makes a bad bylaw look worse. So this is worse than the first one. You take all the regulations out, free rein, uh, so no surprise, on my, my point of view.
Counselor, when you got it, when you looked at it? Okay. So, uh, can I have a show of hands, how many are interested in, in option one? All right. You've got your adoption.
Hands are clapping.
I think we did not start to interrupt. I don't think we provided direction on the term length of the pilot program.
That's right. We did.
He didn't ask, he didn't ask for it, chief, but I think we have found that we have a little gap in that, so just so that you're, you have clear direction. So I would propose starting with a year and reviewing it again then.
Thanks for that.
Everybody in favor of a year? Sure. Sure.
Like, what are we trying to get out of the year, but?
Just see how it goes, I think.
I guess my preference would be just implement it, if there's a lot of complaints that are going to come in and it turns into a budgetary expense in next year's budget or we probably want to call it both, then we can look at changing it or rescinding it. But I think of the life of a chicken, chicken's going to hopefully live longer than a year. And what are we to do if, you know, same, maybe a two or a three year, but at that point, it's been going so many years that.
I guess the way I would see it, if we turned it to be a problem and we put an end to it in a year, we'd probably not take any further application, not, no one else would be ready to have backyard hens. And those that have would be probably wind them down as hens.
Yeah, there's a grandfather clause.
Yeah, I think we'd have to have something in there to allow, we don't want, we don't slaughter a bunch of hens just because we want them to run around any longer.
Okay, so, so one year.
On the bylaw.
All right. Moving on to 10.4, the award contract. Thought it was with Director McMon, but.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll take this one for Director McMon, he's away today. So, spring is here and it's time to think about laying new asphalt and concrete and milling asphalt. So consequently, we put out a tender for the work, we called it our ACPM program. You may recall, council approved a budget allocation of just north of a million, I think it was a million and 60,000. So we put it out in the market, we got a nice slate of competitive bids. And I'll just, for those perhaps not here in the room, I'll just breeze through the streets that will be affected, I think it's important. We'll be doing, under this work, Chamber Street from Beckwith to Market Street, just beyond the Market Street intersection, to cover, to cover the intersection. We'll be doing Elmsley Street from Johnson, near the health unit to the northern limit of the hospital parking lot, which has been a very degraded section of asphalt. We'll be doing, we're proposing William Street, near the intersection where William and Abbott kind of blend, all the way north to Cornelia. We, we put a microsurface on that section probably eight years ago, it was meant to get eight to 10 years, so it served its purpose. It's time to invest further. The subject section will have 1.5 meter paved shoulders for a cycling lane as well, which will connect, of course, to the larger network, including paved shoulders on Highway 43. And also Tulon Street between Brockville and Percy, that's a milling and resurfacing. And the last one is the Market Street parking lot, which, again, the surface is in rough shape, we have some drainage issues there we need to attend to. And we hope to squeeze another couple of parking stalls with a redesigned surface, so. So all of those collectively add up to 808,000. So there is a, there is a delta between the budgeted amount and the amount that we're proposing we spend. So staff went back and had a look at other projects, we don't have any other pre-engineered projects with the exception of Greg Street. It was pre-engineered, the engineering's ready to go. We didn't include it in the tender because we didn't quite frankly think we'd have enough money, so the tenders came in very favorably. So we're proposing that council give us authority to negotiate the unit rates that the contractor included in the tender for Greg Street, which we think will be about 43,000. So we'll still come out with a significant surplus after doing these six sections of street and the parking lot. So, Mr. Chair, I'll pause there and answer any questions.
Thanks, CEO Morris. I remember back a while ago, we started doing a lot of monitoring of our streets and for the condition assessments. And when it comes to this program, it's really well-received program and it's great to get those roads topped up. But when we're paving Abbott's, well, William from Abbott to Cornelia, then we did the sidewalk last year. I'm thinking, what would have been better just to do it all in one go? And another big thing that comes up that I get asked about a lot is, say, at Beckwith North, just past where we finished to roughly the funeral home is a very bad stretch of asphalt. Now at the hospital, what we're going to do to the hospital parking lot, but from there to the border with Montagues, probably one of the worst in town stretches of asphalt. So I'm trying to understand in our planning and prioritization of this stuff, what are we looking at for maybe the next three-ish years and what, how do we look at those boundaries when, you know, if it's awful on one side and awful on the other side of the boundary, why do we stop, where do we stop? And is there any way to get that hospital bit included, that longer section on Elmsley Street?
Yeah, through, through the chair, great, great question. And so Director McMon could probably answer this in a more fulsome way than I can. But I do know that he and his team look at the underground infrastructure, so none of these streets have infrastructure that's due for replacement in the next 10 years. Typically, we would, we would either replace that infrastructure or do a trenchless repair to the infrastructure before we put a surface on it. So, so each of these streets have adequate below subsurface infrastructure in place. So we won't be ripping them back up again. I, I think really it's a matter of, in many cases, you could go for another kilometer, but we have to, we have to stop somewhere. So we, we tend to look at the worst condition of the underground versus the surface and consider any drainage issues that we know exist. So, so I think in terms of what's ahead for the next three years, I could certainly have Director McMon come back with his forecast for the next three years and we could have some discussion around that if council wishes. I don't know what's on the next three-year plan, but, but he would certainly know that.
Any other question, councillor?
So I hope that July or summer new asset manager plan might help us also to give some, maybe not that specific, but it'll point to what we need to invest over the next three years in our road and infrastructure.
Yeah, through the chair, certainly it will. What's going to change in this year's iteration are buildings, as opposed to necessarily linear infrastructure. But, but it's going to provide a more fulsome picture of the bigger projects, which then inform the smaller projects.
And on the Market Street parking lot, if we were in the near future to put a charging station for electric vehicles there, which had been considered with this, is it a time to at least run some conduit under it before we pave it over or?
Yeah, great question. So when we applied for funding a couple of years ago, we had, we had installed a trench, basically, at the corner of the lot. So we will make sure that it's piped or plumbed, so to speak, so that the wire can be pulled through it at the top.
Thank you.
Just further on the Market Street parking lot, it's probably a great opportunity to upgrade the parking meter situation there as well. So we could maybe take down some of the two dozen signs and go to a more automated system.
Yeah, another good question. So we only sell daily and monthly passes there, we're not charging hourly, so we can remove that machine and create more space.
You got a comment?
Well, just, I think just agreeable to, if we've got good unit cost, where there's a little bit left in the budget to consider, some of the comments that councillor McGuire brought forward. And so Director McMon could circle back and, yeah, on Elmsley North, maybe if you go to Maisy, recognizing that there's still a very much traffic beyond the hospital entrance to the parking lot.
You just reminded me, thank you for that. The other consideration is traffic volume. And the traffic volume on the section north of the parking lot is very, very low. We also want to preserve the opportunity, if the Maisy Street corridor becomes an opportunity area in the OP, there may be a need to put pipes through that section, because the pipes don't go any further, I think, than the parking lot. So, within the scope of this project. So we, we felt resurfacing, it might be premature this year until we get direction on the OP and whether that area will be developed and require service.
So I guess overall, just that insight into what's coming next and what makes more sense.
Absolutely. But having said that, we'll, we'll look at extending some of the other sections within this project.
Everybody in favor of this? Yep. Well, you've got your direction. It'll be coming up at a future council meeting. 10.5, that was deferred, correct? Okay. So we're going to 10.6, council endorsement of an application for funding with Director McMon.
I'm back again. So this one's a very simple one, I can wax poetically about it as long as you need, but I'm, I'm told from Clerk Costello that when my blood sugar's low, I get grumpy, so I'm hungry, so we're going to get out of here soon. I'm seeking approval tonight for our endorsement of a funding application. So the purpose of this report, obviously, is to seek formal endorsement from the town, from council, to, to apply for the Community Sport Recreation Infrastructure Fund Stream 2. This would be our second application to this fund, but it's a separate stream. This stream is specifically for new builds and signature builds. You may have heard that we're seeking potentially and chasing some funding in the event that we do move forward with an arena project. And this funding is stackable and would be something that we could roll into that. It is a fund that's up to $10 million, covering up to 70% of the total eligible project costs. So I would like your support to move forward with an application.
I just have a question. I never have a question. Now, if, if successful with the, with the grant funding, what happens if we decide not to go ahead with it? Does that affect anything?
Well, the, that is a great question. What we would do if we're successful with the funding application, but we decide not to move forward in any way, we would probably like to, I hate this word, but pivot, to try to use this money to, to upgrade some of the existing infrastructure that needs to be replaced anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, my question is, what, what are we applying for and what's the scope of it?
So we are going to apply for up to $10 million in funding. We would look at, obviously 70% of it, we would look at design, design work, we would look at some of the studies as well, but also looking at probably focusing on the arena project, so looking to do a design build for that, so we would incorporate that.
So I guess my hesitation with this now is the same as my hesitations with feasibility report, where I still haven't seen a good business case or the updated report or that information to know that we need a field house, we need an ice pad, we need X, Y, and Z. So if I don't have that in my head, clearly, I don't know what, you know, I just don't understand that now's the time for this, but if we can get money for something, okay, but what's the plan for the site?
So what are the potential implications if we say we're not quite ready?
Well, potential implications would be that we maybe don't have the opportunity to receive the funding, which is fine, we could turn it down. The implications if we don't go forward with the application is that we don't have a chance to get funding, which we would need to move forward. So with any, any design, any build, anything that we, we end up doing with that site.
So the application would dictate that we are looking, we are in the process of determining the future of this larger recreation facility, including the possibility of reconstruction of the X and Youth Arena to potentially new construction of a noise pad and, and the addition of a field house. So the, the application can be broad enough, and is broad enough, that all this would be included. You don't need a decision tonight on the direction we want to take, you simply need the support that we are seeking federal funding in order, or?
Provincial.
Regional funding in order to be able to make our decision in the future easier. Okay.
Essentially, yes, and through the chair, if, what we're looking for is we would, we would stack this in, the application to cover things that we'd need to do anyway. So we need to look at new ice plant, we would look at trying to, to source something that would be ideally some green initiatives, things like that. So we, I would, I would hate to turn $10 million down if the province was going to get, condescend to give us that. So essentially, what we'll be doing is looking to make sure that whatever we do, no matter what of the three options, if any of those we move forward with, which we are working on simultaneously to this, to try to get some more information for as directed through the last report. When we bring it forward, this, this application forward to CSRIF, we want to make sure that we can be ready to receive it. Because I think they're going to, I'm manifesting they're giving us money.
Yes, you have my support.
You answered, yeah, you answered, I was going to ask, thought I remembered that you were given the, like, to, to go after costings and feasibility for the three options.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay, so when you come back with the results of that and the results of this, then we'll know what we can afford to do and what we can't afford to do. So that, that makes sense to me, so we've got my support.
Yeah, sounds good, I just, my concern was I don't want to get $10 million, that blocks the same spending $40 million, but it sounds like that's not a concern, so.
And it looks to me like you've got support for it, so.
Thank you.
Go get the money.
I'm trying.
All right, moving on again, and you're not going yet. Victoria Park Visitor Services Center, we're here.
I feel like my hands are out here just asking for money. So the, as you are probably, were previously made aware, the visitor service building sustained some damage this winter. The purpose of this report is to seek council approval for an out-of-budget expenditure of not more than $50,000 to complete the necessary repairs and accessibility upgrades to the Victoria Park Visitor Services renovation in the washroom area. We're recommending the facility be upgraded to meet the requirements of the AODA, which includes that any publicly accessible building, any municipal building has an accessible feature if they're doing a significant renovation and this meets that threshold. So I am also requesting approval to proceed with procurement based on three obtained quotes, instead of taking it out to a tender. The rationale for that is simply, we don't have a lot of time because we're trying to get this done ahead of the, the opening, May 24, long weekend. I can't promise that that's going to happen, but we're as close as possible. We are in the process of getting some quotes. And the, the $50,000 threshold is based on the last accessible washroom that we, we did at the Heritage House, that was just, just over $50,000. So we think we can, we can make this work. And I had a question earlier today, we will be speaking with the tenants, so to speak, and the partners in that facility before we do any sort of design work, but.
So the work is confined to the washrooms? Okay.
And you will notice, if I may, the, this does include, it does not include the $20,000 that was allocated through the capital project. That project's actually been completed and we came in under budget, so we did resurface, resurface, we put a new roof on. And we were pleased to come under budget. So anything that is in there, we may be able to also utilize to do some additional upgrades.
Support of the project, my question is, is there anything we can do to better secure buildings from emergency shelters? Because I'm thinking this is our second one now.
Yeah.
What, what can we do differently this year, or is there, I guess?
Yeah, so we've actually talked at length about what we can do, so we've installed better security and we're in the process of that. And I think there's some policy changes around codes and button access and also just even the installation is simply of a deadbolt in addition to that. If, if the code doesn't get changed at the end of a season, somebody has it, they can go in at any time. The code was actually written on the wall when we went in and so that wasn't ideal. So it's, it's available for other people. And if we reuse codes, things like that, it's nobody's fault, it just sometimes things get recycled or doesn't necessarily get changed right away. So we're looking to make sure that doesn't happen and we can install simply a deadbolt and better windows.
And just further to that, the chamber has some thoughts on, on how to manipulate that positively. In fact, I got a map today, so I'll pass this on to you and let you consult with them.
Thank you.
All right, so thumbs up. All right.
Thank you.
Get to work. All right. Next on our list is the August 5, 2025 council meeting during the Old Homestead with the mayor.
Yes, as I understand it, and councillor McCann, who's on our Old Homestead Committee, might be able to clarify, but there's, the Tuesday evening after the long weekend, so it would be fourth or fifth, I guess, of August. There's currently nothing scheduled, I believe, that evening for activities. And so I'm worried if council are to do something for the community that night, and we've talked, just casually amongst a few of us, we could have typically host a barbecue, potentially the bandstand, but would we want to consider hosting a council meeting? But would we want to consider hosting a council meeting outside in the bandstand? You know, sort of open public forum. But so those are the two ideas that were sort of presented and just wanted to get feedback and see how I'm willing to proceed.
As I replied to you when you first, I gave away my 1,800 clothing.
We could find more if we needed.
I can't period dress, but I I I think it would be much more effective if we did a barbecue than a council.
Yeah. Council.
I agree.
So just the Old Homewood Committee does not have an event dining. There may be other events, community butts, that's why.
Okay. Can we proceed that basis?
Everybody in favor of the barbecue?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Okay. So moving on to councillor McKenna, I'm excited to support a strong candidate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if council and those, it's just a thought. We have this beautiful white banner here and we're, I'm just wondering about a visual. True North, Canadian flag, strong and free. It's eight, it's 22 inches deep, lettering 18 inches, easily removed whenever we want to. Could put different language and it would swing around the length so that it's always visual. And we're sending a message that we are the True North and we are strong and free and we're not. So it's just a thought. I spoke to staff. There's no reason that we can't do it. It's very inexpensive and I just wanted to get. If that's not the, that's right out of our national anthem, if that's not the right verbiage, I'm fine with that. But it's, it's just inviting large words that would be always shown to anybody watching. So that's what I'm thinking.
Could we put a removal date on it?
It can be removed whenever council wants to. Yeah, we would agree to put it up and we'd also agree to take it down.
You got my support.
Sure. Sure. Thank you.
All right. So moving on, the twinning has been deferred. And then we've got 10.11, the proposed expansion of strong mayor powers to the heads of council with C.A.O. Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So last Wednesday, we were notified by the provincial government that they're proposing through a bill to amend an existing piece of legislation to allow strong mayor powers to be granted to 169 municipalities in the province. Council may be aware that strong mayor powers were first granted to the cities of Toronto and Ottawa in 2022. July of '23, they were extended to 27 additional municipalities. I think they were over 100,000. And then in October of that year, strong mayor powers were granted to municipalities over 50,000 population. The proviso in each of those grantings of power was that they had to sign to agree to housing targets. And the idea was that strong mayor powers would ostensibly allow councils to build more houses. That's not been proven, but I stand to be corrected. So so what this means is they've chosen municipalities that have six or more members of council on them. So that obviously includes Smith Falls and includes a couple of others in Lenarc County as well. So in the report, it lists what strong mayor powers mean. It means a number of things. It means more of an administrative role in terms of appointing the C.A.O., appointing other senior management team members, removing those positions if needed, reorganizing the administration. Also bringing forward or proposing a budget, which is typically done by the treasurer. That's that was done, Hamilton, for instance, the mayor brought forward her budget and council eventually approved it. So that's one thing. So you can see it kind of wades into some of the administrative areas. Proposing bylaws if that bylaw advances a provincial priority. They've, provincial priorities have been defined as housing, transit, infrastructure, and I think there was one more, but the big, the big items that are obviously important to the province and important to municipalities. It would also give the mayor veto power over certain bylaws that are brought forward. So that's completely new. And then lastly, it would enable the mayor to bring forward matters for council consideration if the head of council is of the opinion that the matters could eventually advance a provincial priority. That's a broad, broad, broad statement. So anyway, they're looking for comment and they're looking for comment by Wednesday of this week. So it's very rushed. They're proposing a May 1 implementation date. There's a bunch of content here in in the report I won't go through, but we're bringing it forward to see if committee and, well, if committee has comments that they'd like to submit to the province by this Wednesday on these new powers. I can tell you, my colleagues in other municipalities are having the same discussion today, tomorrow and Wednesday. The town of Perth considered it a special council meeting this morning and they they declined the strong mayor powers. And they've asked to be removed from the list. I'm not sure that's an option. I don't think we can opt in or opt out, but you can certainly provide your comment to the province before they move forward with the legislation. So, Mr. Chair, perhaps I'll stop there and answer any questions.
Thank you. Who's the lawyer by Canada?
Thank you. I I would just be a simple letter to bring it forward to saying, no, thanks. We don't agree with the strong mayor's powers. That's my opinion. And one of the reasons is once you set this regime in place, this new regime, in a couple of years, the premier or government of the day could tell the mayor, here are how I, it it becomes, it politicizes. The municipalities in Ontario are not aligned with any political party. They are in other provinces and I don't want to go down that road. So we've become a creep. We already are enough a creature. They have enough control over municipalities to give more. I I just, I would just say, no, no, thank you. It's a bad idea. We don't, we don't want it. It's my humble opinion.
Councillor McWhorter.
Yeah, I guess if you had a weak council with a strong mayor, it'd be great, but I think there's too many, there's too much consolidation of power right now across the board. So unless somebody's got a compelling reason why we endorse it, I'd say no thanks.
Councillor Brennan.
Yeah, I think probably the CEO is right. Powers are gonna be granted to the 40 or whatever municipalities. Our comment, we have till Wednesday. I don't see how this council, I can see other councils that I know of that would serve a very good purpose. For this council, there's, we have lots of four or three votes and, you know, I, we walk out of here and we, everything's fine. You know, it's not like we need guidance. I mean, we make our own decisions and that's, and the mayor has a vote and that's the way it should be. So I'm fine with writing and saying we don't really need it. I don't know that that will change anything in terms of we're gonna get it anyway. I'm not sure, but yeah.
Anybody else got a comment? Councillor Quinn.
I'm on that page. I see no reason for this at all. We sit around this horseshoe, we discuss what's going on within our municipality and we all work together. And I think that's how we should be, is all working together as a team. No, I don't think we need that strength here.
Okay, Strong Man Mayor Pankow.
That's my muscles. No, I I mean, sitting in this seat for for 10 years, I think we've always worked towards consensus. We haven't always agreed. We've always been very respectful of decisions and moved on. I haven't seen a single situation in a decade that I would have felt compelled to take advantage of that position based on what's been outlined here. So I I agree, there probably are some situations where it maybe is more important or maybe necessarily maybe helpful, but in reality, democracy's been working. And so I don't see a need to erode that and and even so, I won't be in this seat forever. And and as much as I would have no use for the powers, you never know what could happen in the future if someone had it and and really felt compelled to. Going firing spree is an example and completely disrupt the civility that we have around here.
Well, I prepared a statement, so I might just. I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it, but what I put down was Smith Falls does not need to incorporate strong mayor powers because doing so risks undermining the collaborative foundation of municipal government by centralizing authority in a way that could disrupt the legislative process and diminish the role of council. A strong mayor system can lead to the marginalization of councillors and reduce transparency, creating the potential for favoritism and unilateral decision-making that does not reflect the will of the broader community. Our current structure, which encourages dialogue, consensus, and accountability among elected officials, is better suited to ensure fair representation and balanced decision-making that serves all residents equally. While this may not be a problem, as long as council is led by a level-headed mayor, there is another election in a year and a half and candidates are currently unknown, making the potential consequences of such a change uncertain. Therefore, I can't support the initiative in our community and I hope that my comments will be forward to the government. Yes, sir.
I think just pass it on to the clerk as our.
There's our, there's our letter.
Any, any further comments? Chair, there's, is it the gallery of justice?
Yes.
Yeah, I may could comment or ask a question.
Sure. Certainly.
I'm not agreeing.
I believe everyone knows here that I am Linda Stronsky. And it's unusual that I would be the one to ask the question instead of Ron, but anyway, here I go. My question is, would there be consequences or negative feedback if the mayor, the council decided to vote yes on this subject? And the expectation of additional housing was not met? Would that respond, would that re, come back on the council at another time?
Thanks for the question. C.A.O. Morris.
Mr. Chair, thank you. So an insightful question for sure, but our understanding of the proposed legislation is it's not tied to housing targets. So I would say, no, there there wouldn't be a consequence of not, of opposing the strong mayor powers. That doesn't mean they might not come in the future. But but at this point, there's no conditions on the power. So consequently, there'd be no conditions on refusing the power.
Thank you. And I'm kind of of the impression, of the same impression as councillor Brennan. They're asking for feedback, but I think we're gonna end up with it anyway. All right, so if there's nothing else with that. Yeah. We have item 10.12, which is committee appointments with purpose.
Thank you. Very quickly, I'd like to bring forward some applications that we've had, that we've received for various boards and committees. The first is for the Planning Advisory Committee. We've had an application submitted by Klaus Vandemere. It has been vetted through staff and supported. We've had two applications brought forward from the Downtown Smith Falls Business Association. There was two resignations that created these vacancies, looking for council support to appoint Amy Rensby and Marnie LaPlante. And the fourth appointment is to the Public Arts Advisory Committee, and that is an application from Ms. Leslie Richardson. With council's concurrence, I'd like to bring forward a resolution at our next meeting of council to formally appoint these volunteers to our committees.
Thumbs up everywhere, so.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any committee or external organization updates? We have no information listing our correspondence items that I'm aware of. So we are going to be moving into an in-camera closed session concerning proposed acquisition disposition of land. Anybody in the audience is welcome to stay, but that's the end of it after, after we get back. So I need a motion, someone to make the move by councillor Brennan, sectioned by councillor Quinn. The Council of Corporation Town in Smith Falls is provided in section 239 2C of the Minus Black 2001 as amended. Moving to a closed meeting at 7:46 PM to discuss a proposed acquisition or disposition of land. On the table. On the table. Here you go.
To staff regarding the proposed acquisition or disposition plan. We have no notice of motions. Can I have a mover, moved by Counselor Brennan, seconded by Counselor McGuire? That the committee adjourn its proceedings at 8:23 PM and stand so adjourned until the next weekly call committee meeting. All in favor? Thank you.
Oh, boy.